will be made available to our community after the session today. We'll post that online, so that will become a public record. Next, turn it over to Chris Lindsay, our Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff. And Chris will walk through their agenda for today, and then we'll get started.
Sound good?
Okay. Thank you, Jody. Good morning, everyone. Before I hit the agenda, just a couple of notes about logistics. So for those that don't remember, bathrooms are out this hallway to the left and then hang another left. Snacks in the back, coffee in the employee lounge and in the kitchen. So it's kind of tucked away, but I want to make sure you know where coffee is. And then don't forget that the meeting is being picked up on the microphone that's in the ceiling to capture the conversations. So it will also catch conversations that are side conversations that are happening. So just remember, remember, be aware of that. So this morning, we're going to do an overview of the city's 2025 budget. We're going to talk about our budget process. And then we're going to move into a bit of an economic forecast. As Jody mentioned, both macro, national and local. And Lindsay Kimball is going to join me with some notes about our local economy and things that we're doing for our businesses. Then we'll have a break and then we'll move into our infrastructure funding opportunities. The discussion we've been having at the Community Town Hall, at the council study session that followed that. And we have some dials, some interactive work that's going to be able to take place this morning. We'll have lunch and then we'll come back and you'll be able to think about that over lunch. We'll come back and focus our efforts on which of those items to move forward on. We'll have a early afternoon break. We'll move into policy discussion to talk about service delivery priorities and any enhancements or reductions you'd like to see to our service delivery priorities. And then we'll wrap things up with recap and next steps this afternoon and get you up by three at the latest. That sound good? All right. So I'm going to move right into our budget overview and budget process. Our city, like every other city and state, county, special district across the nation, we have to have balanced revenues and expenditures with our adopted budget and all the appropriations that we make throughout the year. So this is constantly on the mind of those of us who are, who are doing our budget work. And that comes in really through our revenues and expenses and then any fund balance or savings accounts that the city has. So the charts I'm going to show you come straight from the budgets or our budget and brief document. So we can always refer back to those if we need anything additional. But this slide is across all the city's funds. We started off the year with a projected $125 million available on fund balance across all of our funds. So this includes savings for the water treatment plant and general fund stabilization reserves and things like fleet reserves, right? Down to, down to that level. We have projected revenues of $369 million. Budgeted expenses of $371.5 million. And then the difference between those two is, is that fund balance there? So across the whole organization, all of our funds, we have what are our revenue streams? So this includes all of our utility funds. Stormwater, golf course, post, certainly general fund. So across the whole organization, sales and use tax makes up 40% of the money that comes into our coffers to provide services. Thirty-two percent then is the next biggest category of charges for services. As we look at the whole organization, a large portion of that is water and wastewater rates, certainly. Enter funded transfers, that's money that moves between funds to pay for services. Is the next biggest category, intergovernmental internal billing. Property taxes, if you're looking at the whole, makes up just 2%. Licenses and permits and interest income. Again, as we look across all the city's funds and how we spend those dollars to provide services for our residents and businesses for our community, 70% of the outflow of those dollars is through our operating budget. Nine percent pays debt service, right? So paying for long-term capital projects. Eight percent are those enter fund transfers that move money between funds to pay for services. And then about 14% are capital improvements. Across the whole organization, that's capital plan. We have here where those, where those expenses reside and kind of which of our departments and which of our service areas. It hit me when we were putting these slides together. It's a third, a third streets, a third utilities. And then the rest is split between public safety, parks and rec and economic vitality. And I think that generally hits my expectation of what are the, what are the capital projects that we're doing? And what are we talking about every year? So that was the whole organization, all of our fun types. Now I'm going to zoom into general funds. Most of what we're going to talk about today is general funds. So I did want to level set here on just the general fund. The general fund is where many of the services are provided that are more general governmental services, administrative services, and then public safety, fire, police. Streets comes out of the general funds, community development, economic development. And then our internal services. So as we zoom in just at the general fund, 64% of the general fund is sales and use tax. We often talk about two-thirds of the general fund being sales and use tax. And that's, that's where that is. Charges for services is the next biggest grouping of revenue after that. So that is, most of that is rec fees at our recreation centers. And then there's a number of smaller categories, EMS fees, lots of charges for services that add up to that 12%. Six percent is intergovernmental revenue. So this is often grants, but we have some more steady intergovernmental revenue streams from, from counties and neighboring jurisdictions that we have intergovernmental agreements with. Certainly, this is one that we're keeping an eye on as federal grants and certainly pass-through funds begin to dry up. We're already seeing some of those impacts. Property taxes is just 4% of our, 4% of our general fund. We talk about that low property tax rate, and this is where, this is where you really see the impact. Then we have other taxes, accommodations, admissions taxes fall under there. And then you can see the rest of those, the rest of those revenue streams. Again, focusing on just the general fund, about 63% of our general fund in 2025 is personnel costs, right? So we're, we are an employer of choice, a market-driven, market-driven organization. And this is, this is where that, where those dollars hit within our general fund operating budget. We are a people-driven service organization. Contractual expenses are about 26%. We're seeing more and more of this these days of our, our, especially technology moving to licenses rather than a one-time or capital purchase. So we're seeing movement into our contractual line and away from capital. Commodities are supplies, certainly office, office supplies, chairs, copiers, things like that. We have a little bit of capital outlay, so these are some bigger type supplies, but not big enough to be a capital project. And then 7% is transfers, transfers and others. So transfers out to pay for services from other funds, like our workers' compensation fund and our property liability where we provide insurance to internal city funds. So that was all the expenses, but then broken down of those expenses between which of our departments or service areas. Our biggest, our biggest service area within the general fund is the police department. General governmental, we group those kind of internal service groups, city manager's office, chief of staff, finance, HR and IT, parks and recreation. Our central charges makes up 15%. That's where some of those transfers reside, and also that's where our debt service payments reside. Fire, public works and utilities, which is most of streets. And then community services is our smallest grouping within the general fund. I'm going to stop in, before we move into budget development. Any questions on kind of the level setting of what our budget looks like?
I sneezed when you're describing what commodities were.
Commodities, so thank you. Office supplies, chairs. Yeah, all, all the things that keep it running, monitors, computers.
So has a lot of food expense, I think. Everywhere you go, there's food. So where is that?
At least that rolls up in commodities.
I'd like to know how much we spend on food. Everywhere you go, there's fish. And that's expensive.
I think we can look into that and see what that is.
On that, I'd like to know what the food's for though. If you're going to dig into that, I'd like to see specifics on it because I don't want it used in a, in a way to say we waste as much money on food. Like to know how much of it goes to the community, how much of it goes to staff. So we're going to look into that, let's be detailed about it. On your next slide, when you showed the difference between the different departments, can you, and maybe you will later in the day, but I'm, I'm curious, just as we talked a lot about the fire needs, you know, there percent versus the other public safety. And I'm just trying to understand, is that cost difference because of equipment and personnel? What's, you know, what, what makes the police so much bigger than the other public safety? If you can't answer that off the fly, I'd just like to understand that long-term. You know, we need to probably have some big gains in the fire department that we're trying to look at. We also, we need that in the police department. And so trying to, as we move forward as a community and try to figure out, you know, how we meet all our needs, whether it's streets or whatever, the streets, police, fire, those being three of the most important core services that aren't in a utility. I'd like to just kind of understand for that as staff, how much is equipment? How much of it is facilities? Because, you know, if we're playing forward in a way that is responsible, that gets us to a place where we're not having to go back to ask taxpayers for money, you know, we need to let them take care of it. So when I look at this chart, that's the, you know, where my mind goes and those general services that are not a utility, like how do they split out? Why, what's the, the change? And it's probably a reasonable reason, but I think it's important for us to understand. It's also important for the community to understand. Quite frankly, probably those departments could kind of fit from that because if I'm police or fire and I'm looking at this just in terms of who's getting the biggest piece of the pie, it's not, you know, it might not feel good and it doesn't tell the whole story. And I'd like to understand it better.
So to the, the first part of your question, really what drives the difference between police and fire? Remember, 63% is personnel, so it's, it's people. Our fire department's 153 FTEs and our police department is 295. And that's the difference between the number of stations, fire stations we have, shift schedules and staffing levels versus police.
And that's excellent for people to understand. And I guess the other part that I would make part of the conversation because people are listening to this and certainly there's a conversation around fire. When you look at that in terms of the importance of both of those units for the city and the services we provide, how many staff members were we saying were short on fire that we were trying to add for service levels? What was it, 40?
It's, it's incorporated in by 45.
I think that's just tell the really interesting story when you look at how big the police department is important in the building. And there even times where our service levels have been impacted because of staff. But I mean, if you look at those two, you know, tell the whole story. It really shows the public why it's important for us, for the FTEs and how they allow us to provide service. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, honestly, the easiest way I've been thinking about it is we have six stations. We're talking about two additional, right? So it's an increase of a third, which would bump that number up to close to 20%. 20% of the pie.
I come here, sorry.
It, it would be interesting for, and you don't have to answer this now, but like just in future, when we look at the, the staffing levels specifically for PD, because you have, you know, that, I'm assuming it's also records, that's the crime lab. You know, those aren't necessarily one for one, but when you look at fire department, they don't have kind of different areas that you have. So there's some of that size that's because of the other thing. And so it would be nice to be able to look at, these are pure people who actually report to calls for service versus, you know, the people who do administrative work.
Along the same lines dispatch and the co-responders, right? That are in the PD but are also serving the fire, fire department as well and assisting with calls.
No questions, but those are some points, thank you. Ms. Rosati?
No questions.
Let me talk about our budget development workflow.
Good morning, I'm Sarah, the Policy Budget Administrator. Or if I go backwards and put it forwards. As you can see, we've tried to establish a intense and collaborative, detailed budget workshop, budget development so that we're capturing throughout the entire process and not just once at the beginning, once in the middle and once in the end. So we're almost about halfway through with May. To date, we've hit six, checked off six items and now we're on our seventh with our, with our budget workshop. Each of them hopefully have provided information and a framework upon which we will be building our 2026 budget. And we appreciate your time and effort because each one of these took time away from something else that the council could have been working on or an evening that you spent with us at, at the town hall or Saturday that you're spending with us now. Given we are halfway there, these are the things that we look forward to. So based upon the conversations here, we will be coming back on June 2nd, the first study session in June to make sure we're on the same page and that we heard the thoughts and the feedback and recommendations that we've received today. Things change overnight as you, as you may have thinking about certain things or looking for additional information, we'll provide that at that study session. And then hopefully from there, we will begin to, to really get into the weeds on staff side of it of building the budget. During June through August, we'll share our proposed collaborative budget in August. And then we'll work through those details of the questions that you have once you see them, similar to the process that we did last year of sharing your questions. And I know Mayor Putem, you had mentioned or asked about the community requests. That just closed yesterday, so we'll be receiving them. And hopefully we can speak to that at the June 2nd of what themes that we're hearing. But that will also be a component of our budget similar to last year. And also as an accountability loop for us, everything that we had for in the 2025 budget, the community request section, there will be a new section in the 2026 and we'll be doing this each year. We will say what we did with each of the ones, each of the community requests that came in. We said we were going to do a study here, we were going to look at this, we were going to paint a traffic sign. Staff will then demonstrate what they have, have done to accomplish what that request was to keep that, keep the community informed and keep us on the same page. Any questions about our, our process or concerns? We appreciate your, your collaborative approach with us.
All right, so we're running ahead of schedule. Keep, keep running through. I'm going to talk about our, our economic forecast, both kind of where we are the first quarter of the year and what we've received through CU leads. So I'm going to start with a couple of slides on our quarterly financial report. So this is the document that's posted monthly by the finance department. It's on the city's website that's available for all out there. Monthly report, and I think this one's a good one because we're talking about really results through the first quarter of the year. I would note as we talk through, so these are revenues that are collected in March. But as we talk about sales and use tax, your purchases that you made in February are then remitted by that vendor to the city in Bay. So it's one month delayed. So I try to point out in here, have a little, a little reminder. But as you think about, I'm going to talk about March, but what was going But as you think about, I'm gonna talk about March, but what was going on in February. I, one of the big things that struck out was one of our, uh, one of our grocery stores, there was a strike that was taking place, right? So, um, certainly there's some changes in, uh, sales taxes when something like that happens. So general fund through, uh, March, lots of great information that's in our, we just wanted to, um, highlight a couple of sales tax. A hundred point one percent of budget. Um, so that's like a, uh, kind of an annualized budget for, for one quarter, one quarter of the year. Where were we? Just above, uh, what our projection is. Use tax is a little bit higher than where our projection is, um, for the year. And use taxes, uh, use tax is interesting. It's cyclical, it's one-time in nature, it's construction projects, and also the purchase of vehicles takes place. Uh, our use tax came in, uh, under projections in twenty-twenty-four, so this is one we're definitely keeping an eye on and certainly. Above projections. Um, our expenditures are under budget, um, by eighty-seven percent. Not abnormal this time of year. Uh, there's a lot of work in our organization that takes place over the summer. And we have had, um, we had had some vacancies, uh, that lead to that, uh, that the expenditure is under budget. Talking about some of our revenue streams in particular, so sales taxes, um, I think as we, we internally look monthly at, a whole host of measures related to sales tax, I found March, which again was February purchases, um, to be incredibly interesting. So, uh, through the first three months of the year, we were up, uh, over twenty-twenty-four. But March itself and February collections were down versus the month of March a year ago. One of the things that, uh, hit me last minute was, uh, February last year was a leap year. So this one additional day in February, which is, uh, one twenty-eight was about three point eight percent. So if you begin to account for some of these irregularities, it's a little less concerning that we were down for the month of March itself. But certainly we're tracking. And again, you know, I mentioned, strike was something that's out there. We know there's an informal boycott of one of our major, uh, big box retailers due to DEI policies. There's shifts in consumer trends, and we're seeing a lot of purchases moving, um, online, and we're seeing the benefits of those as well. So we're gonna continue to track those. Use taxes, which I mentioned, more one-time, more cyclical. All three months were up, uh, one and a half percent, uh, over twenty-twenty-four. Use ta, or excuse me, auto use tax in just the month of March was up eighteen point seven percent, which is, uh, really surprising. I think a lot of people, and we've heard this informally, some of our staff, uh, people were trying to purchase cars before tariffs went into effect in the month of February. So I think that might be driving a, a good chunk of that increase, um, over last year. Mayor, we've talked a bit about accommodations tax in, in our capital discussions recently, so I wanted to drill down on some of our smaller groups, uh, of revenues. So, um, on our admissions tax, the city charges an admissions tax to, uh, if you go to a movie. If you're, uh, at a public display of live animals or plants, if you go to a bowling alley, we have an admissions tax on those, uh, those entrance fees. Our admissions taxes, uh, year to date, you know, through the first three months in total, we're up. But again, March was down, um, a pretty significant amount. There are a lot of one-time things that happen and, uh, audits of vendors to make sure that they're passing on the correct amount of admissions or sales or use tax. So that's one that our, our, uh, sales tax team is tracking down. Accommodations taxes, uh, the city's hotel motel tax, it also applies to short-term rentals. This is one that I think is, uh, rather surprising at first look, but there's a little more explanation. So first three months in total or year to date, down, uh, twelve point eight percent. March was down very significantly, um, but March of twenty-twenty-four, we had, um, we had an audit payments of almost a quarter of a million dollars. So if you were to take that out, that kind of one-time event out of our March, when you remove our number, it'd actually be up. It'd actually be up, um, a little bit in March, um, and that certainly would have put us up for the year-to-date category as well. Why don't you make sure you get your money's worth this morning as we talk about our, our financials. So I added a couple of our other funds in as well, um, our golf course funds, uh, which is this two city golf courses. They're doing fabulous. They had a record year of revenue last year. We bumped up their projections and revenue again, and they're already, uh, they're already exceeding those, uh, revenues through the first three months of the year. They're one that as revenue goes up, it also drives expenses up. So we're seeing their expenses are just a little bit above budget, and that's something we, uh, we track through the year, but really exciting. Um, and that helps us reduce, uh, the need, uh, for post-funds with our golf course, uh, to pay for some of their expenses. Really good, really good news there. Uh, and then March for our water funds. This is one we track, uh, weather drives, uh, a lot of the activity of, uh, rates within our water fund, but we're really just getting started. For irrigation season, so our rate revenue in the water fund, uh, is just about at budget. And, uh, our tap fees are, our tap fees are a little low. But those are very cyclical and honestly, most tap fees are, get paid towards the end of the year. So that's not abnormal, and we track these, track these every month. Any questions on those couple of slides?
Can you go back to the, well, just one, one request as you're going through, if you have more charts or anything, if you can explain the colors? Because the legends are so small, I had a hard time reading. But on the, uh, this, yeah, this slide. So how does this reflect or relate to our businesses? You know, I think admissions taxes, that's like our theaters and what else, but, and then the accommodations, our hotels. So since they're both down, first the person that got up. Uh, there you are.
So how does this relate to our, to our business?
Finished my question.
Yeah. So I, certainly these track with trends, right? So as we see, um, you know, we take out that audit finding we're closer to flat for March. That means roughly the same amount of business and the same amount of, uh, revenue taking place through our hotels, uh, year over year. Admissions are, are, uh, admissions are up year to date, but March was down, so that means things were slowing down, uh, in the month of March. February. Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the audit.
Yeah. So, our team in sales tax will audit your sales tax filings, your use tax filings, accommodations, admissions tax, to make sure you're submitting everything, um, that fits in. There you can talk about any details of how that happens, but, um, you know, mistakes happen and, um, there was an audit finding in, uh, accommodations where we received, essentially a, a late payment, um, of, of, uh, I, I don't even know how much, uh, how much time took place. But it was about a quarter of a million dollars. That payment was received in March of twenty-twenty-four. So when we're comparing March of twenty-twenty-five to March of twenty-twenty-four, right, it looks like we're under. But if you take out that, which was like one-time events, kind of a catch-up payment, it shows we're really flat, up a tiny bit.
So not being overly worrisome right now with our businesses?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, so this might be a premature question, but national forecasts are indicating a deceleration in consumer spending growth. So as we go along this, and maybe we'll get to this in the economic forecast, I'll be interested to know if the projected slowdown in consumer spending will impact sales tax revenue and how, and how that will impact it in twenty-six.
We will absolutely be talking about that in a couple of slides. Good question.
Yes. And then, um, on the cap fees, I'm just wondering, and again, this might be more detailed for later discussion, but when were those last updated and how often do we, what are they now and when was the last time we updated them?
Brian, believe tap fees are annual increase.
Okay, so those are proportional. Are, are there any other fees that we just went over that are not regularly updated?
That we just, and that we just went over in the slides? I don't believe so. I don't believe so, but I think that those fees and making sure we're continuing to increase them with the cost of, uh, as the cost of goods go up is something that's, uh, something that's top of mind for us.
Perfect. Right. That's exactly where I was going. And then, um, secondly, uh, the online taxes. Are we capturing those? As we said, you know, we're moving away a little bit from inbox or box store retailers. How does our city capture that?
Thank you. While our city council adopted the Marketplace Facilitators Act, for one, uh, which, uh, adopt, took into account the South Dakota versus Wayfair United States Supreme Court case, and that, uh, impacted revenue significantly over the last couple of years. Uh, and requires online facilitators to capture various small sales into Westminster. That created quite a, an increase in revenue. Our audit team of six, uh, is regularly auditing, um, you know, online sales into our city. And I, I would, it's impossible to know exactly what our capture rate is. Nobody would know at the state, county, city level in jurisdiction, but, um, all we can do is continue to, uh, understand the, the economic landscape and continue to undertake those auditing practices. We have a very mature and experienced, uh, sales, use tax audit team. Uh, and they continue to produce audit levies each year. So I'd like to say, my opinion is that our capture rate in Westminster is very, very high. And, uh, that's proved, uh, as we audit some of the largest companies, that their accuracy rate is very, very high. You know, our city has, I don't know how many zip codes, eight or nine zip codes. I think one is entirely within Westminster. So the biggest challenge for online sale sellers is knowing what, which residence or, or which business is in Westminster. But that's come a long, long way in terms of accuracy. So, um, we can only sample and estimate and do the really good work to know what our capture rate is, but I think it's very, very high. And we also understand our collections relative to our neighbors and the state, these are where we're here and collaborate on those, uh, on those revenues. So I'd suggest that they're very, very high, uh, but it's, it mentioned earlier, accommodations, that's, that's an example where, in accommodations, I think we're all aware that you can either call the west end in Westminster and make a reservation, the old-fashioned way, and show up and enjoy it. Or you can go through one of about ten or fifteen different online sites, right, to make a reservation at the west end. And those are growing, changing and adapting all the time, and we're working very hard to keep up, uh, and know who those good people are. So we can capture all the accommodations and sales tax revenue, because keep in mind, when you stay in a hotel, uh, you have everything that goes with it. And so thanks for letting me chat about that just a bit. It, uh, it's something that our team of, uh, we have eight, our entire sales tax division are very passionate about it. It's a profession unto itself, so.
Thank you. I just, and I don't know where this belongs, but I just want to get it out there. Our shared tax between Thornton, between one hundred and twenty-eighth and one hundred and forty-fourth, I think is coming close to a close. Number one, have we thought about extending it? Number two, um, what does that mean? How's that look? If, if it isn't extended.
James, can you remind me of the timing of that?
I believe it's March of next year.
March of next year, if that wraps up. I, Mayor, I'd have to go back and look at the totality of the revenue share, but I think we were on the shorter end of that, uh, of that agreement. So I think staff is happy to see that go away.
Well, they have Cabela's now, so we hopefully got some of our money back. But, um, so I, I just didn't know. So if that's going away, you're factoring that in.
I actually think we saw a decrease in the revenue that came over as part of that. Chris, do we have other sharing agreements in place in twenty?
One for Kohl's went away. I negotiated that in a, um, hotel room during a break while Broomefield was in meeting and Steve Smithers. We got on another end and ended it at night, so.
And there are some others, shared revenues that are statutory, so open space and road and bridge, uh, sales tax in both counties, or property tax in both counties, and sales tax has to be shared. Adco has an additional property transportation tax, excuse me, that's shared. I can't think of any other agreement driven, uh, ones like that.
On the online stuff, being that I work with a retailer that sells online, it seems to me that most of the places, like Shopify is probably one of the big retail places that people use. And they're getting a lot better about, uh, remitting sales tax. But one thing that's difficult, even of making small business that sells online, is the, uh, remitting to the different cities. So like Lakewood, Westminster, both cities that one of my businesses is registered with. But to sell like a couple of products and then be able to like to go through their whole process just to give you five dollars doesn't make sense. So like, are we putting things into place in order to capture that as retailers get better in understanding that that's something that they have to do?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, and one more thing, just to hearken back to our capture rate, you know, I, I think about it sometimes, uh, like the idea of, how many people do we capture speeding on Sheridan Boulevard? It's, it's possible really to know, uh, you know, how many we're pulling over and giving citations to. It's a toll every, every inch of it, uh, every minute of the day. But there's a, there's a state portal, uh, that is in place that with the function of the South Dakota Wayfair case. Uh, Wayfair is a huge company, many people know of it, but not everyone. Um, they, they sell online, uh, household goods and that. You know, to answer your question, I think the state portal helps that small, you know, home-based business in out of state, you know, that sells a couple of things, you know, that they can go to the state of Colorado and.
It doesn't, it doesn't. And I mean, I don't, like, I understand that that's the intent, but if you ever went through it, it, it's not really great. And to, to try to remit, like, so, I mean, and I think that the states have more work, because honestly, it's probably the easiest thing to do versus all the cities inside of a state. And I think that's a bit of a complicated. But I guess for us, though, you know, whatever we can do to make that easy, I think that's a really good example of our speakers, but I think there are businesses out there that want to remit. But it's like, okay, well, I can't figure this out and it's twenty bucks, so I guess they can come get me for it. You know, there's, there's a, a level where it's like, you know, the, the brain damage over an amount of money that they might have to remit. If we made it easier, um, I think it is probably a bigger topic, but it's just, you know, we should make sure that we're staying on top of making it easy wherever we can. So the other couple of things I wanted to hit real quick, accommodation. So we put in place ordinance around Airbnb. So do we capture, um, accommodation for the Airbnbs that we know about?
We sure do. Yes.
Have we seen, have we seen any change in that since we've put that in place in terms of making people register? Like, what's the captured revenue for that?
Yeah.
Some figures now, what that is.
I don't have any in specifics there, but keep that number.
And you haven't needed right now, but it would be nice to see captured revenue versus expense for us to manage that program.
I recall it being like two million dollars or something a lot long ago.
So I would definitely have been favorable to the city being over social media.
Um, and then the last thing on the, on the tap fee, so, um, knowing that we adjust those for whatever makes sense each year, but we're also one hundred and five percent now to develop. Um, and I know that's been a conversation for a long time, you know, about how, what we do past those. And I know, I'd like to understand at some point that bigger discussion that I know staff's tried and having, because we've had a council level had that. It's not, I've been here, probably in the fourth, knowing that at some point that goes away. You know, how are we planning to, uh, fill that, that void? So, um, I'm not, I just wanted to make a point that I'm curious, you know, where those discussions are, because I can't remember the last time we really had an in-depth conversation about it.
I'm gonna speak for you, Brian, but I think that's probably gonna be a large chunk of the, uh, cost of service study as well, the change in revenue pattern.
Absolutely.
Do we, I mean, cause as, as we, we can be kind of deceiving if you just look at the straight budget. I imagine over these last, or last couple of years and coming years with like uplands coming online, hundred and fourth coming online. So we're going to see kind of a spike and then it's going to drop off. So, um, I'm interested to see that. But I mean, it's also important for anybody listening, if they just look at straight budget numbers, they're deceiving compared to what we'll see in five years from now.
Right, uh, with, uh, what Brian, uh, referenced. This year we're doing a very detailed cost of service study. So as the city, uh, gets very, very close to build out, um, you're correct, the, the TAPP revenues drops right off. And so it has to go into a different sustaining model, uh, for the utility. Um, that's been anticipated and we've already, over us, uh, more than a decade, the city has, uh, shifted. It started to shift the ways reliance on TAPPs versus the eighties, nineties when it really built out on TAPPs. And so, uh, more to come on that, but that, the, the, we have a, um, world-class consultant team, uh, that's now engaged with us, working on this very hard.
Um, I appreciate that. And I guess the last point I would make for anybody listening to pale in that is, this is really important because it, that means it has to, it could potentially impact rates. And so that's where I'm sensitive and why it's an important conversation. We have to care for the system, but I don't want us to get to a place where we were six years ago, thinking that we're going to make that up by, you know, increasing rates, nine, 10, screw that. That's just not feasible for the community. So people understand why it's an important conversation.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Community Services Director Lindsay Kimball to talk about, uh, local businesses.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Uh, good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me. And I've got, um, a quick update on our business needs sentiment and then explaining a little bit about the tools that we have to support our business community. Every two years, we do perform a business survey in Westminster. Since 2018, we've been doing that. Most recently, our 2024 survey indicated that, um, folks are, are generally satisfied with the city. Especially as we know, um, we're very lucky. We've got some great access points and transit nodes, uh, transit oriented development opportunities. Um, 36 and all of the major roadways to access our community are seen as a great benefit to those businesses. That's wonderful. Um, on the negatives, uh, there was a, a significant uptick in responses indicating the challenges of homelessness and impacts to their businesses. Also, um, the, the next few bullets are related, but struggling to find qualified employees, uh, related to affordable housing. So being able to, uh, retain folks, keep them here and, um, able to find folks that wouldn't have a, a very lengthy commute, um, to, to be able to find affordable housing. Um, also they indicated, um, their most significant need was wanting to navigate resources and, um, help understanding what the city could do. So, um, we like to think we're always very nimble and, uh, responsive to these, um, inputs as we learn them. So we quickly adapted. We increased, um, the frequency of our newsletters. We had quite a significant number of folks saying they still wanted to print newsletters. So we, we, um, are doing that as well. We also, um, increased, um, certain, uh, training opportunities that were noted in the study. So we were able to, to shift very quickly and address those. Um, do you want to touch on, there's been a lot of questions, you know, I've heard about, how do we expect the economic uncertainty to impact our business community? Um, and, uh, we have heard about folks delaying significant expansion, significant investments. Um, some very large investments, um, that we, we had in the pipeline. They're still there, but unfortunately they're on pause due to the uncertainty. Um, also construction costs, the cost of inputs to construction just year over year. Um, from, um, some of the, um, indexes show that those inputs have increased between three and four percent, not counting the labor costs that have also increased and the scarcity of skilled labor to perform those construction activities. So that's significantly giving pause to, uh, construction projects and investments. Um, also, you know, um, they've seen our consumer sentiment, there was a question about that, has decreased year over year by 27.1%. Um, so there's just a lot of, a lot of uncertainty. People just saying, well, I'm going to see what happens. I will end the slide with a positive note. Uh, we do expect interest rates to, um, be reduced by the Fed twice this year and twice in 2026. So I have already heard, um, some of our developers and folks in the community, uh, noting that and saying, well, you know, maybe we'll just see what happens with the interest rates to be able to balance the, uh, increase in cost of inputs. So how do we support, um, our business community? We have, um, a suite of business grants primarily for our smaller businesses, of course. Um, the, the punchline here is that, uh, last year we helped about 556 businesses directly with these grant programs. Um, we were able to significantly customize ways we could help folks. And, uh, we have some certain topics here that, that stand out. The Business Safety and Security Grant was new to last year based on, um, that, that input we received from the business community and which I know some of, uh, you all in council received. We also, um, have our ongoing Sage Sustainability Grant Program, which is aimed to add improvements that will help our business community save money and have more resources to, uh, invest in the business. So it's not sustainability to support the sake of sustainability, which is wonderful. But it actually is resulting in savings, um, through resources and, uh, lowering power bills for our business community. So we're very proud of that program as well. Um, so again, 556 companies were assisted. But a really great, uh, soundbite I want to share with you is, um, through about a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of grants, uh, we were able to, um, incent 4.7 million in private sector investments in their businesses. So it leveraged, um, every dollar of city grant money, uh, was able to leverage 24, about 2450 in, um, private sector investment. So that's a great return. Again, a dollar, every dollar we put in, we were able to see an additional $24.50 invested in the community. So we were very proud of that. Um, in addition, I don't have it listed here. We have another sustainability grant program that we are rolling out this year. It's called BE UP, our Building Energy Upgrade Program. This is funded, uh, completely through a grant from the state. And it's to help our large property owners, 50,000 square feet or larger of commercial space, which generally are some of the most inefficient buildings. Uh, we will allow them to provide, uh, energy efficiency upgrades to those structures to be compliant with new state law for those buildings. So luckily in this situation, we, we got a mandate and they also did, uh, give significant resources. So we're, um, actively working with large property owners right now. Again, 50,000 square feet or larger, it's now a mandate to institute these efficiencies. Um, moving on to our, uh, business trainings and hopefully all of you have seen added to your calendars. We have a three-part series, we call it our Business 101. Um, it's been added to the council calendar and we'd love to have you, uh, to partnership with the SBDC. We go through everything from the basics of starting a business as part one. Then next week we have a, um, almost a full day on city processes, permits, how to navigate things of the city that you might need to do, how to get your sales tax license, how to get your business license, how to make sure your business is located in the right spot and the right zoning and with the right safety in place inside the building. So we have, um, and thank you to all of my fellow department heads. Um, everybody participates in those and, uh, it's, it's a very popular program. And the third part is, uh, financial basics. So we do have relationships with our small business lenders and partners. And, um, that also is of, you know, great interest to our business community. How do I get my business off the ground and funded? Um, in addition, we've got tons of different, um, growth trainings, we call them, that are most responsive. They're able to respond to the topical needs of our business very timely. And, um, finally, I just want to tell you about our business resources. I'll, I'll term that. Um, some of you were on our business walks yesterday. Thank you if you were able to join us on the biz walks. Those are very popular. We talked to hundreds of businesses throughout the year through that. Um, we touched thousands of businesses through outreach and technical assistance, which doesn't cost anything but our staff time or connecting them with someone in another agency to help them. Um, also outreach, engagement, recognition, uh, Business Appreciation Month. We've got the Business Awards. Thank you all for joining us at those events. Um, we just, uh, had a proclamation for Small Business, uh, Small Business Week. And of course we have Shop Small Saturday, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, Black Friday, all those things like that. We're working with our partners at the Chamber. And, um, just want to highlight again, we, we've shared, but, um, I'll just highlight, we now have office hours at the Chamber who now has a physical presence and a physical office for the first time. And, uh, we're partners with them. So if someone wants to come into the Chamber, we do have office hours now where a staff, a city economic gentleman staff person is there. Um, and of course we always, uh, welcome any questions that you have. Um, welcome when you get feedback from our business community and share it with us. A lot of times that's led to us creating some of these custom trainings and, uh, support programs. So, uh, with that, I will have you take questions or, um, turn it back over to Chris.
Thank you for doing, um, what you're doing with the 101s through, um, Christine from Cocapelle's. Um, would have died for that. Um, she is one that, um, blew through her six months of free stuff because she didn't understand. She didn't know, um, we didn't have staff that really, um, could help her. We're grateful she's still in business here. And, um, she's, so she, she would be a great person to come and speak of.
Yes.
Why we need this because, um, she, she's the first one that would say, um, why didn't you have this?
Yes.
And, um, and all of the trainings with SB, um, it is terrific. I have taken so many of them with my small business. Um, I just can't thank you enough. It's lifesavers and, um, the grants for some of those that are a little expensive. Um, you, I encourage everybody to, to always sign up because, um, getting that extra help, um, allows a very small business to be able to have that expertise that you just can't pay for anyplace else. Thanks. I presume.
So Dr. Kimball, you asked, you, you talked about, um, the, you know, the dollars that we, the grant amount. Um, as we look into 2026, are we looking at, do, do you feel like there was more of a demand than we could provide grants for? Or like, how, how are you looking at that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Um, so for, for this year, um, the grants are still within our capital budget. Um, I'm working with Chris and his team. We're going to move those to operating. We think that'd probably be more of an appropriate spot for them to land and starting and opening those grants earlier in the year. So they more align with our budget year and our budget, uh, with the calendar. Um, we, and we have done with certain grants, particularly small, um, business capital grants and, um, the new Business Safety and Security Grant. We, um, we have often, but we'll go into our operating budget anyway to cover some of those because we really don't want to turn any business away that applies and is qualified. You know, so as we have in the past, um, uh, you've been able to dip into our operating budget to cover some of those. But we generally do spend all of, all of the money that's allocated.
And you, so you feel like you're at a good, um, some, you know, a good number for.
And we were, so we reallocated, sure, thank you. So, so we reallocated some CIPs that were underutilized for the 2025 budget to be able to fully fund the proper amount, proper level. And, um, I feel, yes, if, if we would be allowed to move that starting point for 2025 after reallocation and move that to the operating budget, we'll be in really good shape. Thank you. Thank you.
Questions?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to talk about qualified. What is the qualifications to be there?
Great question. So, uh, each one of the programs has, may have a slightly different qualification. And, and one example is Historic Westminster. You obviously have to be within Historic Westminster, uh, to qualify for that, uh, External Facade Grant Program, Facelift Program, um, which you require, um, I, in all honesty, recite them off the top of my head and I'm happy to, to share those with you. But, um, it generally, you know, must be in business, uh, going concern for a minimum of 12 months. Um, must have a business plan or some that require certain trainings. So you, you might be in the program, but we also are going to require before we give you the grant to complete certain trainings with the SBDC to make sure that, um, you know, we're not just throwing money after, let's say, a marketing issue. Um, now you've gone and gotten some education about that topic. Um, so hopefully I'll make you more successful. But, um, we certainly can provide you, we've got, um, you know, slip sheets on each one of the programs and the qualifications.
Big one is when they buy large amounts of, um, or a, a piece of equipment, like sewing machines, to do my business start at 20,000. So, um, you give a percentage.
Yeah, yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other questions?
All right, I'm going to jump into, uh, our section on the revenue forecast. I think most of you know that, uh, the city's been working with, uh, the University of Colorado Lead School of Business and specifically the Business, uh, Research, uh, Group at, uh, CU Leeds. Uh, we've been working with them since 2021. They also work with the state of Colorado, local, other local governments and entities, um, to help provide, uh, economic insight into the work, uh, that we do and those groups do. You know them primarily from their business economic outlook that they do annually. Um, the Business Confidence, uh, Index that they do quarterly. As we've looked back on our, our relationship, I wanted to, to share with you all. Um, you know, they do, they do very detailed, uh, projections for our staff that we use to help drive our budget. And they're surprisingly accurate. In 2023, their sales and use tax projection was, uh, was within a quarter percent of what we saw are actuals. Um, and 2024, a little bit further off because, uh, our use tax came in a bit lower, but, uh, they were within two and a half percent in 2024. Um, so they've shown a, a high degree of accuracy, uh, and helpfulness with our, with our revenue projections. And I think we're going to need that because things, uh, in, in the market are getting, uh, getting rather interesting. The folks at CU Leeds use, um, a number of different forecasts and national indicator forecasts to, to, uh, to zero in on both the state and for us, um, a local forecast. Uh, much of what they use comes from Moody's Analytics. And there's a lot of, uh, detailed, uh, types of forecasts and optimistic and pessimistic, um, that they use with us. We got our most recent report from them on March 31st, end of March. Um, and I, while things continue to change, um, I wanted to give you some of what they said. So, uh, they're projecting, uh, as of the end of March, uh, real GDP to grow by 0.8% in 2025. Uh, real GDP again nationwide to grow by half a percent in 2026. That equates to moderate economic growth, uh, throughout that forecast horizon, which for us is, is, uh, multiple years. Um, they're showing job growth slowing, um, and, uh, rising on the range throughout that forecast horizon. All right, I threw the bagel picture in. Do we have any West Wing fans? No, the, the Josh Lyman, you don't use the R word. We, we call it a bagel instead. Uh, that's what our team has been, uh, that's what our team has been, uh, talking about. Uh, the West Wing reference. Um, so we are thinking about bagel. What does that mean for, uh, for us? Um, that real GDP, uh, we just got the, uh, actuals, um, earlier this week. Uh, real GDP actually decreased in, uh, in quarter one, um, as it's annualized for the whole year. Uh, decreased by 0.3%. I, that said, we also saw employment growth accelerate in March. Um, and retail sales, uh, surged in March up 4% year over year, again nationwide. I know I saw in March pictures of long lines at Costco and other places. So I think some folks were doing some stock up shopping prior to tariffs taking effect. So I think that's probably driving some of that. And certainly we see, uh, our May sales tax numbers, which will be, uh, April. I think we're going to get some real, uh, interesting data as to what that trend looks like. I mentioned auto sales, um, auto sales growth, uh, prior to tariffs taking, um, effect as well. Um, and they've noted that in their revenue forecast. And, uh, what they've shared with us is a slowdown, uh, is expected, but it may not appear in the economic data for. sometime. And I think many of you will remember that, you know, another recession until afterwards, based on the tracking data that.
Couple of questions. For one, I mean, few one of this year, obviously it's right after presidential election. People get nervous after. Let me curious what it looked like after the last two. Like, does that stand true? I think the tariffs is an additional piece of it. But I mean, my business that I work for during the day has certainly been hot topic because we get a lot of, of our materials before we make T-shirts from other countries. But what I will say, and so it'll be interesting to see how it plays out. And you probably don't know the answer to this, but I can just tell you off the ground. A lot of companies have found ways to move things to places like Vietnam before things kicked in. So it'll be interesting to see how much it actually hits. Because it seems like in the business world, even from vendors, it seemed like everybody was a lot more worried about it three weeks ago than they did last, you know, or say probably more like six, five weeks ago. Last couple of weeks, it seems like people are kind of breathing a little bit. I don't think that means it's not going to impact us at all. I just think it's such an unknown for us to, to watch. And what I've seen in the real business world is, is it hasn't hit us as hard as we thought it might so far. I mean, we don't know. So with, I think with like negotiations with China specifically, people don't know. But it seems like a lot of the other countries have come to the, to the table. So just for people to understand what it looks like in the real business world. But I wouldn't, you know, to my first point, I would be interested to see what that looked like in those after presidential election. Because I mean, I don't find that that uncommon for us to, you know, have people feel uneasy. Especially even the last presidential election, we also had an pandemic going on. So there's just so much that happens right after administration changes that people might hold on to their money a little bit. They may be even be hoping, I think the interest rates is a good one. That's, you know, I think they're in a mix between the tariffs, but also people saying, you think interest rates are going to go down? So why am I going to go borrow money now if in six months it's going to be cheaper to borrow money?
Jameson and Brugan is our point person on our work with Leeds, and I think you might have an answer.
Yeah, in 2017, US real GDP grew 1.4% and in 2021 it was 6.4. So it varies.
I'd be interested to go back a little further and look at that too. And certainly that's something we could take a look at.
Cause I think, you know, again, with like the last time around, the pandemic is an extra thing that probably was more impactful than. Well, I don't know. I guess that was such a weird time, but it would be interesting to see how that trend. Even really, you know, that there is a trend there. That's something the city can plan off of. There's going to be one every four years. So.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. So as we take that forecast information and Leeds gives us scenarios for sales and use tax and property taxes and, and, and puts together a number of scenarios for us. So you'll see here, you know, we're thinking about 2026 and that's a lot of what we're talking about with budget development. We're also tracking our results right now, 2025 and, and what those look like. You can see there is a huge, a huge difference in the bounds of what optimistic and pessimistic looks like in 2026. And I think that's some of the biggest variances we've seen in those scenarios since we started working with CU Leeds.
So what I was waiting for, because I've been through this with this group twice. And so you gave, and I think it's impressive how close they were, but to which line? Because I know that they always give us a different forecast. So were they kind of in that close, that moderate? Or where did they actually land?
That was accurate to base, actuals to the baseline forecast.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I will share that the message on this is what they, what a year ago we called pessimistic is where the baseline has moved. So the baseline has shifted down, so lower growth to roughly where we were talking about pessimistic a year ago.
Did they, did they share what drove that projection?
Do you want to talk about that?
Give me your question.
What drove their, their, like what, what impacts or indicators are they deciding to shift that down? Like what moved them to lower projection from a year ago?
So they've got almost 30 different variables that play a role in that. A lot of it was, some of it was tariffs, some of it was unemployment and to that nature is probably the larger drivers.
How, how, because if I recall correctly, I mean, you guys worked with them a lot. I feel like there was a year where this kind of shifted back and forth a couple of times, maybe during the pandemic. But I mean, how often are they relooking at this? Is this only annually or they kind of real time? Helping us understand what's happening quarterly or like, how often are they? Because I think this is a year where, you know, to my earlier point, we just don't know. Don't know what's happening. I think there's a paramount of poker playing in DC happening right now. And you just, it's just such an unknown about how its administration does things.
So around the pandemic timeframe, we went back to them twice. One right before, I think it was, it was late May and then of course, early in the spring. And other years where we're not seeing a lot of economic uncertainty, one year or one.
So what are we going to, this year I would say, I hope we're doing more than one. Yes, maybe three times, but that would be my, I mean, so you know, just, I hope that that's what you're going to do, much like we did during the pandemic.
Yes, yes. And I think I, you know, you talked about uncertainties. I think that's a bit of the message. It's, it's uncertainty in the market. We used to uncertainly consumers, consumer behavior and what they're purchasing, projects that move forward. And that's certainly on our minds as we move forward.
Do you think from your department's perspective, when we think about revenue? You know, I'm, I'm on board with playing the kind of lower baseline because we, we don't want to, you know, then you come in better, great. It helps us plan better, but are you comfortable with where they're putting the baseline? Or do you even think maybe that's too optimistic? Like, is there any discussion in your department to look at that and say, do we agree with this or do we, should we play it even safer?
Yeah.
So I, I would just say that their, their forecast was projecting a recession to start in quarter two of this year. And if we're actually seeing it starting quarter one, then that would probably change our viewpoints. They were also projecting three quarters of recovery as well to get back to where we should be. So that may also change if we are seeing it happen in quarter one versus quarter two.
And, and certainly that's something, yeah, we take their expertise and apply a number of factors that we see to where those fit in with the budget. I'd say one of the, the issue with their forecast, a year ago, as we saw some use tax come in slower than they had expected. So we're, we're analyzing those differences. So I, where this hits the, our forecast, I just wanted to pull out 2025 and 2026 to talk about, to talk about the impacts. So 2025, we have budgeted 136.9 million dollars in sales and use tax collections. And what's in the forecast, you see it's slightly below that. It's 132.3 million dollars, a gap of about four and a half, four and a half million dollars there. That's something we're going to be tracking closely through the rest of the year. We're seeing some revenue streams that are coming in higher than expected, which is what happens every year. We're seeing some come in lower than expected as well, in addition to sales and use tax. But I think that's something that we're certainly going to keep an eye on. Then moving from that 25 budget to the 26 budget, they're flat. For sales and use tax, 136.9 to 136.6. So potentially a shortfall through the remainder of 2025 and then really flat from our 2025 budget to 2026. Again, James mentioned their forecast assumes a mild recession that happens in 2025 with a three quarter recovery, which then gets into 2026 when we see that recovery.
Hey, quick question.
We have, for general funds, we have both the general fund reserve and the general fund stabilization reserve. I have the number off the top of my head.
You don't have to give it to me now, but it would be nice to know just long term.
Yeah. The general fund stabilization reserve stays between five and 10% of our sales news tax returns, just to give a, to give a bound.
Quick question on the, the, from 24 to 25 budget, what was, was it, what was the increase budgeted for?
24 to 25 budgets.
From 24 to 25 sales and use tax, what was the increase that we projected at the time?
About five percent, about five percent.
Okay. And as, is that the typical one? That's the typical increase every year on like roughly on, on, on average?
No, I don't, I'm, no, that's not the typical. It's fluctuated with economic conditions every year.
When was the last time it stayed flat or decreased?
Saw an increase.
That's the eight?
I do not know off the top of my head.
Wanting to cut down.
Want a flatter increase in pandemic. Yeah, we'll look that up. There you go. Yeah, a decrease for 2020. Thank you. Counselor Azadi, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
This is the, the top left is the same revenue chart for earlier. So I just, I know it's, I know it's smaller, but I wanted to, I just wanted to remind you of that. Property taxes is another one that they provide us a projection on. Property taxes is smaller. It's four percent of the general funds. That's why I put the pie chart in there just to remind you. Property taxes increase on a two-year, on a two-year cycle. And so we're tracking those increases as well. 25 to 26 will be, we expect a small increase. But again, there is a, there is a pretty decent sized bound, upper and lower where those projections are.
How do we, and again, I know that you know, I'm not available. We have quite a few houses and stuff in the downtown coming on, like, is that part of the projection? And we have like an idea where we think that's going to land. So let's say the next four years.
Yes. So we worked with our planning and building staff as we're thinking about when those, when those units are online, when folks move in, we track with county treasurers in terms of when folks start paying property taxes on those units. And we think about that as we track tab fees also. So as those come online.
Assuming the answer is just being asked anyway. So then are we tracking that revenue captured versus the services that, you know, that are going to be required for those ops? So you get 100 more people, maybe that's an extra officer or firefighter or whatever. Like, how are we matching those revenues versus needs?
I follow. Yes, we are tracking that. I have some key takeaways here, but I, I did wanted to, to show the index of consumer sentiment, which is one of the ones that I come back to frequently. So the University of Michigan puts out consumer sentiment. You hear about this in the market news monthly when this comes out. And I know it's hard to see this go off the, off the trend line there. The dotted one is the monthly data and the solid blue is the three-year moving average. Consumers are happier the higher up it goes and they're concerned about their spending, the lower that that goes. Right? So the lower that that goes, we see people not making some of the large purchases or home improvements or vehicle purchases that they would have made if they were, if they weren't as concerned about the stability of the market and a number of factors. I think this ties into the uncertainty message, right? Folks feel the uncertainty. So that consumer sentiment has gone down. You see quite a lot of, quite a lot of variation and cycles through this. And this is one we'll definitely continue to track. I think my key takeaway is as we talk about a revenue forecast, it mixed message on the national economy and then how that, how that impacts us. We're seeing our revenues growing at a slower pace. They're continuing to grow, but at a slower pace than we've seen. Going back to the question about reserves, I believe we remain in a strong financial position. We have strong reserves to help us through a recession, if that, or a bagel, if we happen to get there. But I think we're in a strong financial position.
Are the reserves 37 million? Is that what it was?
Very first slide.
Yeah, what are you talking about?
Thank you. Oh, that's, that's what I'm saying. Give me one second because I do want to grab that. I think this is, this is good to have. We projected to begin the year of 2025 with 19 million dollars, 20 million dollars in our general reserve and 7 million dollars in our general fund stabilization reserve. So approximately 27 million dollars in just general fund reserves.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, I'm in something.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to Jody.
Thank you. All right, I have two slides and then we'll take a break. So we'll move right into this. Since July of 2024, when I became acting city manager, I've directed staff to work with the philosophy of a lean budget. That is lean, efficient and aligned to community needs. So that's where the lean acronym comes from. And aligning to community needs reflects the commitment to enhance community engagement. And we're out there engaging with our communities, with our community leaders, with all of you, city council, to make sure we understand where we need to be putting our resources. This one is, I'm going to tell, tell you something that's very, very unique and important. And that is, early projections show that there will be little to no general fund carryover this year. This is the first time in well over a decade that this city will not have a carryover moving through budget cycles. And what that reflects is in effect eliminating discretionary spending. In other words, the city council, when you set your 2026 budget, you're directing how the city spends every dollar versus having a carryover amount, which has in the past allowed nimbleness and flexibility. In this case, this budget will lock in how we spend every resource that we're entrusted to spend in 26. So I just wanted to frame that. This is a very unique budget cycle, budget year for us. That's on top of what Mr. Lindsay described in terms of the revenue expectations and the economic forecast. As best we know, we're definitely wanting to be aware of that moving into the, into the budget. So five elements have been driving your leadership team to where we are today. One is to optimize resource. One is to optimize resources, and this is what I refer to as leaving no stone unturned in our, in the, in the current budget and resources that we've been entrusted with. Um, and that means looking at efficiencies in every aspect and corner of our organization. Um, where that has hit the ground for us is, uh, in particular around our staffing, and that is to, uh, uh, focus on repurposing, reallocating, um, and streamlining how we operate with the existing resources that we have. In other words, we're making sure that every position, a process that we have in place and, um, purchase that we make aligns directly to those community needs. So aligning to, uh, uh, resources, just as in our homes and our businesses, uh, we know that every dollar matters and we're aligning that so that every one of those is tied to critical community needs and city priorities. And of course, this ensures that our investments and our expenditures, uh, bolt up tightly to the strategic plan, um, that you have, uh, uh, adopted and approved. Terms of prioritizing essentials, we're focusing those funding efforts on what's essential to support the health, safety and quality of life of our community. And again, um, this budget bolts directly up to our strategic plan, the 2025 budget. And this, the, the work that staff will do to support you in your deliberations on the 26 budget will help ensure that our, uh, budget bolts directly up to the, uh, 2026, um, strategic plan. In terms of prioritizing essentials, um, that's, uh, that's what I mean by that, investing efficiently. Um, we're funding programs, priorities and services, um, smartly, uh, to make sure that they, uh, deliver what the community expects us to deliver. And then finally maximizing value. And again, that's getting, uh, everything out of what we've already been entrusted with. And my next slide is going to talk about, um, what I mean by that. So lean, uh, the acronym again is a commitment to, uh, continued commitment to optimizing our existing resources. And that again, leaving no stone unturned to find new efficiencies and ensuring that Westminster, uh, continues to be an employer of choice. So as we put more reliance on our existing positions and our, uh, redeployment of those wherever possible, that puts more, um, um, emphasis on the role that our staff plays, our existing staff. And so there's pressure on staff and our commitment, of course, remains to be a competitive employer of choice around, um, compensation and benefits. I want to highlight for you since July of 2024, um, that 29 positions in this organization have been repurposed, reclassified or restructured. And what that means is, um, had we not done that, we would be heading into the 2026 budget cycle, um, with at least an ask for 30 positions, uh, added to this, uh, staff count. That's not the case. Uh, and in fact, uh, deploying, redeploying, uh, vacant positions as they arise, reexamining every single vacancy in this organization has allowed our leadership team to restructure 29 positions above a total savings and effects of the 26 budget cycle of, of at least $3 million. That does not include equipment and support, um, for positions if we don't need those anymore. So I just wanted to emphasize that. Um, that heading into the 26 budget cycle, we've done everything we can to position you for success, uh, in setting this budget. Um, that every dollar that, that, uh, that you will be deploying, um, and allocating in the 26 budget will go straight to where you want it to go. I can say, uh, you know, I don't want to be, um, frank about it. I, I'm not sure that the 30 positions that we've redeployed will get us through the 26 budget needs. And specifically, I want to say, for example, um, we've heard, uh, quite a bit about the increase in EMS call loads for our fire service. Those call loads are handled through our dispatch, which is actually a PD function, and we've not increased the dispatch team size. And so, uh, the chief and I have been working on strategies to redeploy police positions. It's, it's difficult in PD because, uh, those positions are patrol officers, detectives and such. And it's, it's not, it's not the same as, uh, redeploying another position. So I, I just flagged it, uh, in some cases, we may be seeking, um, to, uh, in order to continue to provide that exceptional level of service that our community has come to expect, we may be looking at, uh, dancing for your consideration. Uh, some modest staff, uh, changes in, in a couple of, uh, key areas. I would highlight that, um, you know, the work continues in community services. Uh, Lindsay Kimball is leading a restructuring of her new department. And one of the focuses of that restructuring is to double our rental housing inspection program, um, um, resources, uh, staff wise, um, so doubling the number of inspectors that can be deployed um, at the right time, but not increasing staff. And the way that she's doing that is through cross-training existing inspectors in other areas so that they can now take on, um, the work of rental housing inspection programs. Uh, when they have that flexibility in their work program and vice versa, our renting, our rental housing program inspectors can now do other inspections when they're not doing rental housing inspections. So we get a more versatile workforce, but that's one example of, uh, of what I, what I'm describing when I say we're redeploying existing resources to the greatest effect, um, possible. And thought that this would be a good time to, uh, bring you up to speed on where the lead, your leadership team is, uh, heading into supporting you for the rest of the day, which is now to start to explore, uh, priorities that you have for our 2026 budget. Any questions? Comments?
Break is overdue.
Break is overdue, so, uh, time to adjust fluid levels. Uh, so we will reconvene in how many minutes?
First 15 minutes.
Can you remind us what the kind of is that's what's us like compared to having ever been a great good spot as far as where most people land it's a great
It is I agree yeah some against some of the uncorporate county areas obviously those are harder to maintain full counties and so I think City Westminster we do a really good job of that is identify all those needs throughout BS as far as other jurisdictions Brookville Arvada Northland
And where does that trend say for the last decade like if you want a goals 55 is that an increased decrease that keeping a status quo
So this would keep the status quo of 55 what we saw you may recall back in 2020 one of the local asphalt plants shut down and we were able to pay any of our roadways so those roads took a big impact as far as the degradation and one of the programs our team does is we'll go out there make sure a crack ceiling we're looking at the subgrade we're doing all the slurries seal there's a whole program to extend the life of the payment as absolutely long as possible and through that process the material costs are still going up and we're still maintaining that so what we're going to be posing is a way to make make sure we can keep that paid for on 55
So when we talk about materials just came to mind I remember when the town was getting tore up it seemed that we were able to sell some of the asphalt is that like is that something that we normally do when we go look at materials where we can find places as the Denver Metro develops that there's opportunity to drive down costs by looking at where we source the materials or however we do a met version of it
That's a great question so the answer is yes on every single project we're looking at how much of the recycled asphalt we can actually put back into our own payments there are also technologies on how we literally can go through and mill and then repave right behind it so you can utilize and extending that material as long as you can so our team is looking at all those different options to make sure we're getting best value and the best product delivered
And last question kind of along that same line as far as what we're doing with external resources versus internal resources I imagine you're continuing to look at what makes sense to drive our dollars far as possible
Hundred percent in fact one of the items here all of the concrete replacement program that you've seen the city is all contracted out so our concrete curb gutter the AD ramps transitions that's all via contract we don't have any house crews to do that every year we look at in and out analyze what would it take to bring crews in-house could we provide better quality service better reaction time to AD transition complaints trip hazards things like that versus having to have contractor come out and do that so we look at that every year and you know we'll be presenting that data to council and if it makes sense to bring some of those things in-house it'll be up to your direction to do so
Last and I'm sorry I have one more question is you made me think with ADA stuff how does that increase your guys' needs as you care for like those different things that ADA requires in terms of sidewalks
Simply put every single new road that we touch will back up we're basically grandfathered in so a lot of the ADA issues that are out there currently as long as you we don't touch the road they can stay just like they are but in advance of any project we go out and actually do that ADA analysis and so we build that into our project cost to make those upgrades as we go through so it's not a you know one time hit it's something we look at every single project
And I appreciate that I know that we don't want to arbitrarily have to replace stuff ahead of time however like give you an example say you have a street where you have somebody who needs those ADA and it's in have that how can besides just typical budget request or is that something that we're trying to track for our residents so that if there is a need for it because that's the whole purpose of why they've started making those mandates is you know so that people have accessibility if they need it so I would if we don't have something it would be nice for us to have an avenue better than just a budget request if there is a place that makes sense for us to focus dollars when it comes to replacing things versus waiting till it's done
I sincerely appreciate that and to give you one example councillor Zadi who's listening and maybe remember there was a senior housing project in historic Westminster and we had some complaints particularly on fire responses to the number of issues kind of in that housing complex our team very able to go out there and actually contract out the widened sidewalk create some AD accessibility paint fire lanes in that area to improve that so we do listen to the residents that provide that particularly during the town hall and then we try to prioritize and budget those as needed so things like that or anything that even shared in green during the Big Dry Creek stabilization project we realized there was not an ADA ramp kind of getting into that area so that was something that through that particular capital project we're able to add into that project because of that response
Great thank you
Oh sorry one more
John
Oh yes councillor
Do you use those URA funds in the downtown for roads and sidewalks
So initially we issued certificates of participation for downtown infrastructure improvements in acquisition of open and we need to get back with you on the exact which roadway was being constructed and together and source that one but generally now those funds are being paid back and to pay the COP only
So now we're going to talk about some of the fire station findings so Chief Burke and I can kind of tag team on this I'm happy to walk through line by line on where we are with the current needs for the cost estimates and all that Chief Burke talk about some of the staffing and equipment one of the things that we've gone through is as we start looking at Station Eight Station Seven also the replacements of Three and Four and the Training Tower and modernization is our teams have been working together updating those cost estimates that originally were kind of round numbers for the building themselves the numbers you see before you today include all the offsite infrastructure tap fees the architectural the FND fixtures furnishing and equipment inside of those facilities as well and so I'm going to start with Station Number Eight the current estimate
Yes sir
For a second On the big printout that's in front of you
Thank you
So with that Station Number Eight you know we've highlighted this as council has directed us to begin looking into URA funding for that particular station based upon the need and so that current cost estimate the station of 36 million that also includes the land acquisition because that currently falls within the foster property business improvement districts so we now have a letter of interest with that developer to what what those actual costs are by the land and by out of the business improvement district in that area so very fresh negotiations happening in that space additionally we just got really good numbers back from the municipal court project for what it truly is cost for the AV equipment your technology security cameras all the kind of interior of those buildings and so those kind of that fresh data is now being built into what it actually takes to build an operating functional fire facility in all these cases so 30.6 million is the current estimate for all in cost for the Station Number Eight and I'll let Chief Burke talk about some of the operating and FTS
So the operating costs for Fire System Eight we analyzed our current operating costs for six fire facilities came up
How does that increase your guys' needs as you care for like those different things that ADA requires in terms of sidewalks?
Simply put, every single new road that we touch will back up. We're basically grandfathered in, so a lot of the ADA issues that are out there currently, as long as we don't touch the road, they can stay just like they are. But in advance of any project, we go out and actually do that ADA analysis. And so we build that into our project cost to make those upgrades as we go through. So it's not a, you know, one time hit, it's something we look at every single project.
And I appreciate that, I know that we don't want to arbitrarily have to replace stuff ahead of time. However, like, give you an example, say you have a street where you have somebody who needs those ADA and it's in have that, how can, besides just typical budget request, is that something that we're trying to track for our residents? So that if there is a need for it, because that's the whole purpose of why they've started making those mandates is, you know, so that people have accessibility when they need it. So I would, if we don't have something, it would be nice for us to have an avenue better than just a budget request if there is a place that makes sense for us to focus dollars when it comes to replacing things versus waiting till it's done.
I sincerely appreciate that. And to give you one example, Councilor Zadi, who's listening, you may remember, there was a senior housing project in historic Westminster, but we had some complaints, particularly on fire responses to the number of issues kind of in that housing complex. Our team were able to go out there and actually contract out the widened sidewalk, create some AD accessibility, paint fire lanes in that area to improve that. So we do listen to the residents that provide that, particularly during the town hall. And then we try to prioritize and budget those as needed. So things like that, or anything that even shared in green during the Big Dry Creek stabilization project. We realized there was not an ADA ramp kind of getting into that area. So that was something that through that particular capital project, we were able to add into that project because of that response.
Great, thank you.
Oh, sorry, goodbye, one more.
John?
Oh, yes, sir, Councilor.
Do you use those URA funds in the downtown for roads and sidewalks? Those are the same thing as paying for roads and sidewalks?
So initially we issued certificates of participation for downtown infrastructure improvements in acquisition of property. We need to get back with you on the exact which roadway was being constructed and what was sourced at. But generally now those funds are being paid back. And through the COP, only one.
Okay, so now we're going to talk about some of the fire station findings. So Chief Burke and I can kind of tag team on this. I'm happy to walk through line by line on where we are with the current needs for the cost estimates and all that. Chief Burke talked about some of the staffing and equipment. One of the things that we've gone through is as we start looking at Station Eight, Station Seven, also the replacements of Three and Four, and the training tower and modernization. As our teams have been working together, updating those cost estimates that originally were kind of round numbers for the building themselves. The numbers you see before you today include all the offsite infrastructure, tap fees, the architectural, the FND, fixtures furnishing and equipment inside of those facilities as well. And so I'm going to start with Station number eight, the current estimate.
Yes, sir.
For a second. On the big printout that's in front of you. The thing on the up left.
Thank you, Bill, thank you, appreciate that. So with that, Station number eight, you know, we've highlighted this as council has directed us to begin looking into URA funding for that particular station based upon the need. And so that current cost estimate, the station of 30 million. That also includes the land acquisition because that currently falls within the foster property business improvement districts. So we now have a letter of interest with that developer to what those actual costs are by the land and by out of the business improvement district in that area. So very fresh negotiations happening in that space. Additionally, we just got really good numbers back from the municipal court project for what it truly is cost for the AV equipment, your technology, security cameras, all the kind of interior of those buildings. And so those kind of, that fresh data is now being built into what it actually takes to build an operating functional fire facility in all these cases. So 3.6 million is the current estimate for all in cost for the Station number eight. And I'll let Chief Burke talk about some of the operating FTEs. That's fair.
So the operating costs for Fire Station number eight, we analyzed our current operating costs for six fire facilities, came up with essentially an average for those facilities that are similar size. So approximately 33,000 for both Station Eight and Station Seven for operating costs. Continuing down on Fire Station number eight, as we talked about one of our last, a previous council meeting, I can't recall the date, but we talked about staffing that station with an engine company and having a dedicated paramedic to be an ALS advanced life support engine. What we have there is the staffing to staff that engine. We also know there is staffing that is needed to support the additional fleet. We mentioned this in the budget retreat, or not budget retreat, the budget presentation in January, that we have a challenge point or a shrink point with fire department apparatus and, and meeting, having fleet have enough technicians to support the demand. So increasing our fleet requires additional support in fleets, also additional facilities, additional facility maintenance staff. And the more staff that we bring on, there's also additional training needs and support. So that's reflected in those FTE counts. When we talk about equipment, this is largely tied to a one-time purchase related to equipment to outfit the employees, the firefighters that would staff the station, that's the bunker gear, the air pack, the regulators, their safety equipment that we need to buy. And then when we bring in that apparatus, such as your fire engine, it's about $150,000 that we need to bring in to purchase the hose, the extrication equipment and all the equipments requiring to provide that service. I did mention before the apparatus and we see at the Fire Station number eight, approximately 1.25 million, and that is for the fire engine, which we know the URA can fund the purchase of that apparatus.
With the personnel equipment though?
A hundred and fifty thousand, you know, when it comes to the apparatus, we need to look at that closer. That's something that has come up in the recent days. But we'll explore further if at least the 150,000 can be covered. Well, of course, we'll explore if it can do the personnel as well. Not sure, and not when I say the personnel, the personal protective equipment for the personnel. We know it can't cover personnel staff, but we will explore that further.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, to me, I'd say we push that as far as we can.
Absolutely, yes.
One of the other items here, I just want to briefly mention, and so the, all the capital cost across the top, that totals about 147 million. As the fire department and our public works department have been working together on, what does that delivery timeframe look like? Or suggesting as an option is the AOP funding needs would be around $9 million a year. And that would allow us to then kind of build out the, our rent from design through construction into operation, allow the chief time to get training personnel, equipment, or so that we can have a full, functional, operational fire stations and replacement of the other ones as well. So that'll be a key element as we transition later on to, to that board, as to how that all plays out moving forward. Simple terms would allow us to then pay as you go for the fire stations over time. Next one, I'll talk about the streets, additional funding portion of that. In order to maintain that PQI of 55, we currently spend around $9 million a year in the asphalt. I'm going to kind of stay focused on each column as we go through. So right now it's around $9 million. In order to maintain that PQI of 55, we need to bump that up to 13.1 million. The street program right now, again, that always leads before the asphalt. That's about 40% of the total asphalt cost goes into the concrete replacement. So we're looking at upping that, currently it's 3 million, we'll be looking at increasing that to 5.5 million. Traffic signals, currently we have about 2.7 million going into the signals and street lights, maintenance and operation of those. And again, this is all based upon our asset management prioritization as we move throughout the city. The funding need there, the gap we have is about 5.6 million on an annualized basis. And then traffic home and mobility is one that our team, we get a lot of calls and complaints from school zones, mobility questions, things of that nature. And so this funding currently, we're at around $83,000 a year, based upon the volume of requests we're getting, particularly with the residents and around schools. We know we have a backlog of projects that we want to get accomplished to improve safety mobility throughout the city. So that's about 1.8 million for those, those projects. Again, total program, 26 million, equipment needs, again, if we brought in some of the in-house concrete crews, that'd be $270,000 for truck and things like that, the traffic signals and street lights. Rick and Nippon mentioned before, one of the things that keeps them up at night is we currently have, we have two folks that are on our signals, that 24/7 operation, if anybody hits a signal in the city or a traffic cabinet, those are the only two folks going out that responding to that and replacing it in a timely manner. And so it's, it's an area that we need some help with. That equipment cost would be an additional move, staffing in the dollars to kind of help us kind of get to where we need to for more adequately responding to those emergency situations. Questions on that? Yes, I'll be right back.
The traffic calming and mobility. I know we're talking about like the uncertainty with grants, but like the safe schools grant programs and things like that. Is there a way where maybe some of that 1.8 million at least could be, you know, the, what we're spending now, the 85,000, could that be a match to sort of leverage to get more? Just considering that there might not be grant funding that we could access to hit at least that.
Yeah, that's a fair question, I appreciate that. So, you know, from my understanding, yes, we do go after those grants. I know we have a safety program, the H7 dollars that are coming in. So we do have a whole program this year, spending down some of those funds. But as far as the mobility side, I don't know personally exactly where we've gotten those funds in the past, but I'll make sure our team is actively looking after those grants.
On the, to continue for the signals. Operationally, say those guys are, one of them's on vacation, one of them's saying, what do we do today? Do we have like a contract with somebody else that comes in? Or how are we filling that need if those two are not available?
That's a great question, two ways. One, yes, we do have contract work, we can bring some data on emergency bases to the theater, they can't just jump like our team would. So we kind of don't have as high quality service. Secondly, we do have some internal staff, to Jody's point earlier, we're looking at how to re-train or cross-train existing staff to help us do that as well. One of the other things, equipment wise, we only have in Public Works that one bucket truck. Parks, Rec and Libraries does have a bucket truck. If one of those are down, we share that equipment between us. And so those are things we're being really thoughtful about on how to provide high quality service and safety to the residents. But yes, to that point, that does, has us concerned. And so we're looking at how to cross-train and bring some people in house. So with that.
Hey, quick question. So looking at the slides, are we saying that on an annual basis, we are looking for 35 million for both streets and fire and that should cover everything in 26?
Next slide up, Councilor Zadi, and one thing I will mention, out of this 26 million, we currently have $7 million that comes into the city from the highway user tax fee as well as road and bridge from Jeffco and Adams County. So there's about 7 million that's already going into the asphalt program. And then another 3 million or so is from our roadway improvement fee. And so currently about 10 out of that 26 million is already going into, it's just not enough to maintain that PQI. But I think we'll get to Councilor Zadi's question on the next slide.
35 million, dark, yeah.
Yep, got it.
So this is the funding opportunities chart that we've shared a couple of times. And based on the feedback from the town hall that we had and the last discussion we had in the session with you all, we've narrowed down to the shaded items to work on today and moving forward. We're thinking about these as funding dials or funding gears, right? What is, what can we turn, when and how to begin to bridge that gap that we just talked about? Mayor, I did want to come back and make sure we clarify this one for everyone, since we've talked about our tax rate a couple of times. Just in the interest of transparency, our sales and use tax rate is the, the chart that's on the left. You can see the city's 3.85% sales tax rate. And then where that lines up within the total rate paid with our residents in Adams County and in Jefferson County. So we can show that transparency there. And then the chart on the right, which shows the city's 3.65 property tax mill rate and what that would be. And you could see then the comparison to our neighbors, many of which who also have an additional property tax for their fire district on top of their city mill levy. So this is a portion of the large sheet of paper that's in front of you. It's also an interactive dashboard that we have set up in two spots this morning as we're going to move into some small group work here. And many thanks to our friends in Public Works and Utilities who were able to, to create this with some of the awesome tools that we have at the city to weak, change and create scenarios to begin to bridge the gap that we were just talking about. We've identified sales and use tax, accommodations tax, property tax, marijuana tax, which I want to highlight. And then our roadway improvement fee is potential options. And I'll get to the reallocation of our CIP as well. I do want to make sure we highlight marijuana tax because I think we've talked about that a couple of times here and what that means. Where the authority level is. So if the city were to legalize the sale of marijuana, which could be done under city council's authority, it would be taxed at the current city sales tax rate of 3.85%. It's three of that general, and then the open space and the public safety tax on top of that to get to 3.85%. If we were to put a ballot measure on of an additional tax, right? That would then be within the voters' authority to decide to add an additional tax over and above the 3.85%. So we do have both options on here, leaving those both at zero. And this would be a scenario where we didn't legalize marijuana sales. What we've projected is based on four licenses within the city, based on districts. It's really similar to the Thornton model. We have some really rough projections on what that would look like in terms of sales and you'll see that in here. That would be something that the revenue would not be immediate, right? As soon as it, the tax in place or those are, those licenses are out. And there would also be some costs associated with it. But because this came up, we do believe it's worthy to share that with you all.
Do you know how the police department feels about that? What does it mean for them?
Well, it's all over the neighbors that have it. Last thing we reached out to them, generally speaking, it's an increased call level. As you see, you do see violent issues outside of it as well as the robberies because it is a cash business.
Isn't the industry in a retraction right now? So I'm just kind of curious as to whether or not we really see that revenue.
Yeah, from a, a favorite cities, they've said, it's way down.
As it relates to the information we get, yes, the sale of marijuana is regulated by the state has decreased. As it relates to the black market, I don't know that we can say there's.
Certainly, that's something we want your small groups to explore when we move into the small group discussions.
The annual funding, the annual funding needs says 35 on there, but I thought I just heard it's really 25? If you take off the road fee and whatnot?
Yes, that's because we've already included those other revenue sources that, that John Burke mentioned. The existing external funding, the existing roadway improvement fee on that, on that chart.
Okay, got it. It said on your gap, it's 17 really, right? You have revenues with time to say, yeah, we're chasing a 17, almost 18.
Yes, so this screenshot already has, it already has some of these fields filled out, right? So like this, this scenario that's on the screen envisions that we've legalized marijuana sales and a lot of licenses and voters have approved an additional 3% set, 3% above that. This scenario has additional sales tax, additional.
Because the time we start, we'll see that zero.
Yes.
We'll see that in the scenarios.
I have questions on the marijuana tax. I know it's a, it can be a pretentious issue. I'd be curious about how much it's shrunk. Good question, we didn't answer this part of the call load as we've seen in other cities, especially ones that have limited amount. Like I think, maybe a good example, where I think they have maybe two, they've really limited it. You know, I'd be curious what their, their call load is because I, to be frank, one of them's in a building that I have a business that I work at that's in. And I haven't heard of a time, well, they have had break-ins, like it's, you know, generally like after reporting things, you know, in business hours, so I'd be curious about that. But to this, and this is something that really confused people when we put this on the ballot. The reason we put it on the ballot is because, specifically me, I was, I wasn't comfortable saying, let's just do it. Like I wanted, you know, the community said, they wanted to legalize it, but they didn't tax it. I don't think they understood that. So just like operation, like today we could say, okay, it's legal, but we're not going to give out any licenses unless we're able to pass the tax. I mean, that's the reality of what happened, that people didn't really understand. So like, I, I am curious if we do look at that, let's say we're going to, like, what are our options to actually do that? Because, you know, too much, you couldn't say, you know what, actually it is legal, we just don't do it because we don't make enough. But I think it's a fair thing to say, that's why most cities went down that path was they were trying to fund certain things. So I'd like, if we're going to look at it, let's at least understand all of the options legally that we can do. Because the way that it was presented, people really used their mind, they were like, he voted yes, like, yeah, but didn't. We're not doing it because we did get the extra tax. And so it's not worth the, the, the extra work is basically what it landed to, right? So. And I do think it, it is a, I also happen to know is there is shrinkage in the ones I know of in Lee Ridge. I don't know what kind of shrinkage and I also don't know like how long that's been. I think some of it's probably that it's more widespread. I think some of it's probably an economic impact where people just don't have money for it. You know, so I think interesting to know potentially, and you probably can find out from the state, what the trends say over the last, you know, six years is versus just this year. Because I think, you know, our earlier conversation about the perfect of the day, either it will supply some time or is that actually something that's going to continue to go on a downtrend? We're making decisions that we hope funds things for the next couple of decades. And so that should be not different. You know, what's the actual life of marijuana business been in Colorado? Trends today, because we should be thinking about that for being, if they're paid for something for the next three years. You know, if it's going to make more work for our city services, but that drops off in year five and, you know, then is it costing us more to deal with it than it is making us? So, you know, I want to really get a picture of the trend. Good timeframe.
I appreciate the thoroughness. I think many of us, clerk's office, PD are thinking, thinking along those lines. Mayor, you have a couple of questions.
Sure, thank you. Could you identify for the options below here, which of these would have to go to the ballot and which are a council vote?
Yeah, so it's on the, it's on the sheet on the bottom right on this slide. So we believe city council can, again, allow the sale of marijuana. But a vote of the people would be required to add an additional tax to that. The roadway improvement fee is something that's within city council's authority. And then certainly an increased for sales tax, accommodations tax, well, property tax would be a vote of the people.
And then within this, I thought on our, at least our budget town hall, we really discussed some of our fees, especially with water. Bill, I believe that was some of the fees within the water bill, but I think there were other fees, not just the accommodation tax and the roadway improvement. There was some other fees and I don't think I see those here.
So we had, the roadway improvement fee is really the, I think, the biggest one that we talked about. The stormwater fee is another one that we've been looking into. I think there is also a backlog of stormwater projects that would prevent some of that. Any increase, I think, we need to catch up on. some of that. Any increase, I think we need to catch up on those as well. So that's something staff is continuing to analyze that stormwater fee. That's the other one that I believe you're thinking of.
Yes, thank you.
Just looking at this with the roadway fee. Still haven't settled the discussion. That's come back and forth a couple of times about commercial, how it is different from presidential. Opinions about it across the board, but I feel like it's had a conversation that's going to run that this at some point.
Yeah, so I think we can, we can start with that today. So there's, there are two, two boxes here that are in the scenario. The residential is just a per month figure. And then the commercial is a per month per one thousand square feet of interior space. Ten thousand, thank you. So we can build some scenarios here. I think what we've seen with looking at this internally, because there's still new commercial accounts that it's not big dollars when we're adjusting that, but you'll be able to, to see that at stations.
And I appreciate that. And maybe it's not, you know, the silver bullet, but I do think that has to be raised it. That it makes sense to, to adjust the commercial just out of being equitable to, you know, to our residents that. I mean, and then they want to bring in people in that don't live in the city of Westminster and they are causing, you know, degradation of our road. So I just want to make sure that we're making them pay their fair share.
And can I add that, you know, for today's purposes, that model is fairly simplified around the commercial. If there was a, if there is a willingness on city council's part, we will look at more sophisticated options, not just square footage, but use also. So it's driving the, the use to a, to a commercial facility. And we would be able to present that back to city council if there's a willingness for us to look at that in more, in more depth. But for today's purpose, it's, it's an order of magnitude exercises to see how sensitive the calculation is and what that looks like on the revenue side and whether it's worth driving into deeper.
Well, I mean, just briefly, from my perspective, I mean, I understand that. And I think that's why we started looking at it though. That's why it's complicated. Like somebody like Christine isn't causing the use on roads that, you know, somewhere that has a lot of heavy trucks. So I think it really was originally when we started talking about it, that was kind of the thought process, at least from my perspective of they're impacting the roads if they have big heavy trucks a lot differently than a small business. And so since they all have that same commercial rate, I don't know, you know, I think that's the hard thing to tackle it, but because it's not a square footage, it's necessarily an indicator of what trucks are going back and forth from the business. I mean, and quite frankly, in my neighborhood, the biggest impact is probably FedEx. They're not in our city, but they're going up and down a hundred and eight. They drive like maniacs. So it's, it's been, it's the traffic from that FedEx facility is crazy, but.
Well, I'm trying to understand this chart. The annual revenue is that current revenue, a hundred nineteen million.
That's the current revenue?
So we're only gaining three million. So if we even did all of these taxes, it wouldn't even come close to seventeen million that you're saying we need every year. We proved them all. Is that what you're saying?
So this is, this is a generic scenario. So yes, the three, yes, you're correct. For this scenario here, yes, you're correct on the impact. I would say like you mentioned, the three million dollars for sale. That's with a, with a a point one percent, zero point one percent increase there. But yeah, you're, you're correct.
Now that we make up the rest.
That's for discussion. We want to, want to.
Think it was taxes. And taxes actually lower someone's debt. Well, let's just spend on something else.
I was going to say, when Julie and I shared our mayor manager talk, property tax bill that everybody gets and all the things that are on it. And with a neighbor that's in Westminster but paying apex for their recreational facilities at two hundred and forty-three dollars a year. I just said that out there that, and it's the same for our neighbors that don't have, we're a full service city and we need to help people understand what those fees would be on that property tax if they had to pay for those. I mean, we, we just have to show people what they're getting that other people are still having to pay on their taxes. Because we're equal, equal with any of the things we do with property tax. But they have that on top and we're a full service city. So that's where I just keep coming back. And at the table I was at, people, it was like you hit their head in a brick wall and they said, that's all we pay for property tax? And yeah, and there are cities that have gotten that increase because that's consistent. That's ongoing and that you, you all know when it's coming in. These other things, you know.
Same, same note. And I feel like this is where the conversation was hard for the tax with the fire department is a lot of people don't understand that. Like if they live in Los Angeles or we were to live in this, but actually I had a huge argument with my cousin who was a city councilman and we, she insisted that we have to have it part of our property tax. I don't think he ever believed me that that's not the way it works here. And it's, you know, it's just different. My plug in our budget, not the way it works. So you know, the, the art of doing anything like that, that education needs to be around that because, you know, that is part of what most places are paying the property taxes for their fire services. People don't, don't understand that. And I also don't think they understand the benefit of that. There, the sort of lineings in sales taxes, if we're doing a good job and this is a good place to do business, then people who don't live in Westminster are helping pay for those services for them. You know, so there is a, that part of the conversation didn't happen and I don't know, you know, at what level we can educate people if you do something on the ballot so that, you know, we're not pushing, but just educating to say, you know, understand we go in for a property tax and that hit only people who live here versus the sales tax that hit everybody's shops here. Because I don't think people understand that. Don't think that the story was told so that people understood it through a lot of the initiatives. And, and I'm, I'm not an attorney and I don't want to be an attorney, so I don't understand how probably push that. But feel, I know that we're conservative when it comes to that stuff, but maybe we understand that line by looking at what some other things. Because I think that there's been, just in my own research, there's been a greater level of education coming from the governments pushing some of those initiatives. And at the end of the day, I want my vote behind the NASS for taxes. Like I want to make sure that we give it a good, that it's a good structured thing for the whole community, but we also are giving it the ability to pass by educating people. Or saying no, and if they say no, great, at least they're educated. But I can tell you, I mean, how many of you have talked to how many people that didn't understand what our initiatives were about? I, I would say that was the majority of people that I've talked to did not understand why we were asking.
A quick, a quick comment related to the roadway improvement fee. I do also recall that the discussion was supposed to be around a per use. So I would like to see a per use. And from what I've seen in other communities, you know, like in Portland, they do a monthly fee based on the average daily vehicle trips generated by that, by that business. And they generate a lot of money that way. Rabahoe County, they do it by new developments. So new, new developments pay a fee based on the projected traffic impact. And they make money that way. So, so I think we can make a lot more from that roadway fee if we just focused on the, on a use model.
Just want to say I had liked that idea that councillor Zadi just mentioned, but I'm also going to follow up on what was just said. But I'll start with my thoughts on all of these is the low hanging fruit. I feel like the ones that are pretty easy for us to absorb without too much impact and that just make common sense. I think we should go after those. And so specifically definitely the roadway improvement fee. I mean, I'm thinking maybe even if we looked at eight dollars a month, depending on when the last time this was updated. Right? When was the last time this was updated?
Years, two years ago, the only to increase. Six dollars, six dollars though hasn't been changed since its inception.
Since twenty sixteen, twenty fifteen.
I mean, I think we should account for that. So maybe we even look at nine dollars, right? I mean, hear me, I know I sound crazy, right? But.
Councillor, do you mind if I interrupt you?
Yeah.
So I think we can do a lot of this, what you're going into in our small group exercise that we have set up, right? Like how much? So we have this available to be able to create some scenarios. And so what we would like to do if we can, Mayor, is I do very easy grouping. We have two stations set up. So Mayor Brooke, councillor, councillor Ireland. If you want to take the front station, Mayor, councillor. In the back, so each group will have facilitator Larry or Barbara. You're going to have two votes from PBO to help you run some scenarios. And we're looking for you to, to come up with one or two scenarios that your group is comfortable with it further exploring. So councillor Zadi has access to the dashboard and if he wants to throw in. It's the time amount of opportunity. So let's you and I and Aaron chat because we're running a little bit late. Twenty-five minutes to explore some, some options.
No problem. Well, maybe it is. Five to six. These people follow my this. I see you.
Lunch? Just an agenda check, time check for everyone. I know we all want to be out by 3:00 PM so we can get our bets in for the Kentucky Derby this afternoon. We are running a little bit behind and we had a lot of discussion in our small groups that I could hear. So, our goal as staff in this next section is to look for some consensus amongst the funding options, those funding dials that we had. Based on the discussion, just to be transparent, I'm concerned this is going to lead into our later session this afternoon. So, is there a desire to continue the discussion here or a briefer discussion of these funding options so we can move into the other city council funding priorities this afternoon?
I think on some of them, we don't have enough information to make a solid, this is what we should or shouldn't do. I especially think with what you have set up, if there's a way to have that for a town hall and let people see as well as show what it takes to be a full-service city.
Lunch? Just an agenda check, time check for everyone. I know we all want to be out by 3:00 PM so we can get our, uh, we can get our bets in for the Kentucky Derby this afternoon. Um, we are running a little bit behind. Um, and we had a lot of discussion in our small groups that I could hear. Um, so our goal as staff in this next section is to look for some, uh, look for some consensus amongst the funding options, those funding dials that we had. That we have out. Based on the discussion, just to be transparent, I'm, I'm concerned this is going to lead into our uh, later session this afternoon. So I, is there a desire to continue the discussion here? Or a briefer discussion of these funding options so we can move into the other city council funding priorities this afternoon?
I think on some of them, we don't have enough information to make a solid, this is what we should or shouldn't do. I especially think with what you have set up, if there's a way to have that for a town hall and let people see as well as show, um, what it takes to be a, uh, uh, full-service city versus if we chop out, um, parts and wreck, what would it look like? I mean, you can set up a whole bunch of scenarios so people understand what's in this budget. That doesn't have to be in the budget, uh, but they can pay for it different ways if they want to. I think that's healthy and has good discussion, but because of all of that, and we, I know with the marijuana tax, um, we had questions about what other taxes did people have on, on the, I think the roadway one is the only one I can think of that was under that. We could probably solidly say people were willing to look, how much is the question? So we had from one to up to $10, so a total of $10, not $10, half of the six that we already paid.
So Mayor, you started with where council needs more information and I heard a little bit. Does anybody else want to pop out for later discussions on this topic where we need more information?
We want to, I feel like we reported out, we haven't, I tell why. And like, so on, on ours, we were thinking that maybe increasing the property tax. Because if you went up to 10 mils, the average, what we were told was $300 a household. Um, but like if you did a 23.5 sale tax, when I know my family spends on groceries, that's only $50 a year. I mean, in either of those things, you could say is reasonable to any of us sitting here and understand how we have to do. The problem, I think that we were finding, uh, because we still have to sell it. We still have to make it make sense to the mayor to point to, to the public. You can't make it make sense to the public to believe, doesn't matter. And so, uh, some of the other things that we talked about was like accommodations. If 7%, how does that rate of a city? Same with, and actually it sounds like maybe Rich doesn't have an insurance tax on in there long. So, no, I think that we just don't have enough to, I mean, we could come up with a calculation up there, I guess. And say, here, that's your gap, but is it going to pass the taxpayers? Should they gonna give the city what it needs? So, and I, I think there are different opinions across the board from the three of us. But at the end of the day, the how, they don't concern them. The how though has to make sense to what people. And, you know, back to my point I made before we had this discussion is we need to figure out how to tell our story nice. We often need to show in my mind, um, which is part of the discussion and others disagree, you know, they're happy to let, hear them out, but we have to show the things that this staff's done in the last year to say, we're going after reaping your rehab. We're tightening the belt, we're putting stuff towards more services and then showing what the gap is. And I don't think that we're in a place where we fully know that. We've started doing that today with the URA stuff, but that wasn't part of the discussion last time. The other thing that, yeah, for specifically, we see more detailed information around the surveying work that was done last time. That drove us to say that sales tax was the right thing because maybe it's not that the sale tax is the wrong thing, maybe it's didn't tell the story, people didn't understand it. I mean, because if I recall right, the, when you guys did that survey, property tax was, was a no-go. And maybe property tax is the right thing, but still at the end of the day, like that, I mean, the word and I don't, you know, I don't know that. And again, there's, that would, but for me, you're not going to get my support unless we have a good story and you have a mechanism that fits that gap in a way that uncomfortable thing, this makes sense to me as well. And I think that if we're going to do a successful, we're going to have to educate. And I think that if you don't have all seven members on council on board, I think, you know, it's hard enough to get sales tax. We need to, our, you know, that council, community and what that said, listen, this is the right thing. This makes sense to us. Otherwise, we're going to, we, some of you or whoever sits in the seventh seat is going to be back here having the same conversation like we've had in the last.
Communicating with your HOPR perspective on all that one. And then off the road, if you have any ideas to your point on town for it, you need to do. Yeah. All right, I'm trying to be solution oriented here. So, um, to counsel this point, we need a better story. And so I'm trying to figure out how we do that. And to the mayor's point, uh, we get more community feedback. You know, we already had a budget town hall and the last thing you want to do is waste more staff time. And obviously a budget cycle, if we don't make any moves this year is costing the whole city time. That said, I do think we need buy it, but maybe we take a couple of our proposals, add one more, um, town hall with as much community outreach as possible and try to get their feedback instead of asking them to say, if we are planning to do, you know, get that response. And maybe we have one or two or three scenarios for them to present. But then we're offering them a solution and we see what the feedback is and how that goes. Um, because obviously we do have a long education campaign to go down, we do exit these roads. We just follow the sale tax fail. And so we can propose the same thing without taking it either information or a different route along. Um, personally, I saw that the property tax is the biggest impact. And we don't have, to the mayor's point, we don't have a special district over our city. We don't have another tax overlaying the city. And I just think that residents don't know that and don't realize how low our taxes are, our property taxes are in comparison. So if we offer them a solution, try to get their feedback then. And then, uh, also of course educate as much as possible and then see how that goes. If we have any suggestions from staff, of course, about how else we can get the community to respond to a ballot measure. I'm just trying to think of ways to get a feeler for how they will respond before we actually do it. Because otherwise, you know, we will, so I hate to add one more task, but I feel like that's the right thing to do. And say, okay, this is that proposal, this is what we're suggesting, I mean, that's.
I just could follow up on that just because of not, you know, from my perspective being in that same group. When you say that property tax is the biggest thing, that depends on the way you put the box. I just put 15 in there or, you know, I could put sales back 2% and that's going to be a bit of an increase. At the end of the day, how does that impact the residents? And in a way, so you have to more be driven by what's our need long-term. Though if the need is long-term, 15, then yeah, okay, maybe that's, uh, 10 mils and that hits the gap. So that's the biggest impact, but I could do the same thing with sales tax. And I guess just, you know, to clear my perspective is which one of those things is going to be amenable to the taxpayer in a way that they're going to most of them. Cause you do have to lay an actual, what that impact is to a resident. And I think that those of us who've been here through some of the water-based discussions, you know, understand that in a way that it, there has been the conversation about, oh, this is only $10 per resident, per household. How did that work out for us as a community? Like I can, I've worked with plenty of colleagues who only got to serve one friend before they've gotten us applied to the work that we have to do. Um, and so, you know, I want to know if, if you want to fill the gap with property tax, the thing the mayor ultimately is pointing to, I think that you can't do all of them. Like you're definitely going to fail if you try to do too big of a combination for all of them. I think I have an exception with the accommodation tax. I mean, that's kind of a little bit different, necessarily hit the residents, but you wouldn't want it to arbitrarily keep people from wanting to help here. But you have to look at it more of, okay, if we're going to go after property tax, how many mils would we have to be? Then you have to get ready to tell the story about how that impacts the rest. Not just what it does for them, but what it's going to do to them. Um, you know, it's average income in the house, they're in the household Westminster, we know that. You can tell that story, but you still have to tie the whole thing together. And then you gotta say, here's what you're going to get for it, no matter which, you know, how many you go. And so I, I guess that's where I'm a little frustrated. It's not so much that, I, I know a lot of people want to come stick a poll. I want you guys to tell us, here's the gap. And I want you to tell us, here's how we're trying to meet the gap, which you've been, you know, you've been doing about those things now. Okay, then how do we work as a team to tell the story? And we are the representatives of the people who live here. And so that we want to make sure that they're taking care of this. And you guys are the ones saying this is going to give staff what they need in order to provide the services for the revenue.
That's your, for the other group, I've watched you all discuss.
Yeah, and we, um, similarly wanted more information on the property and sales and use tax options regarding more, um, can we do some polling and understand, for one, like, I do think, but, you know, to your conver- to the conversation before, we're going to have to pick a horse. Like your theme for today. Um, and with that, can the polling under, you know, information so that we can understand which is the better horse? And then, um, to what extent? And, and kind of go from there. And, and the point that we also talked about, we do need to have a, um, a clear definition of what we are going, like what is it paying for? And making sure that that's something that resonates with the community in terms of what they want to pay for. Um, that's the property tax and sales and use tax. I, all the others talk about the other ones, I would just say, um,
I am in Atlanta.
The, um, accommodation tax, that was something that as long as it's comparable to other communities near us, like we were open to that increasing. Um, and with the, uh, I'm going to skip marijuana tax, we just talked about that one, but the roadway improvement fee, um, I think we all were open to the trip generation concept. Um, and something that I was hoping we could do, I brought it up like several years ago, that, that we have to have commercial pay more for this impact that they are, than a residence, but um, I will throw out there that maybe it doesn't need to just go to $7 and just kind of sit there, that we can actually have a CIP increase baked into it annually. And so does it need to go to $6 immediately or can it, um, increase annually? Um, and and I think for the roadway improvement fee that, um, Councilor Ireland, Ireland and I were concerned about like just that ultimately, if it gets too high, we start paying for it ourselves as residents. So, um, you know, maybe there's a cap, even if that's been a relationship to the trip generation.
I would like to see the cities that have done it already, of what impact it had on, if, if any, what impact it had on the residents. I think that would help. Um, and then we, we felt differently as far as the marijuana taxes. As far as I feel, I feel like I am a representative of our constituents and our constituents have clearly said through voting that this is what they want. And so I, I'm here to listen to the, to the people.
So I share the way I thought that someone gave us of our thought, um, and fancy about taking it back to the people that they're willing to give up as, or have their taxes raised. Um, I'm looking at it as a business and there's some expenses that are fixed, we cannot control. But like events, when we participate or, or put on, that's something we can control. Um, trips, trips we go on, we can control that. Food, that was food we buy, we can control that. Raises, we can control that. How much people we hire, we can control that. So there's expenses we can control, we can control the heat, we can control the air conditioning. There's things that we can control that are charged. And that's not one of the things that we're talking about, but that's one of the things we need to talk about. Um, because this is what this needs to do to make earnings. We're not making earnings, but we're telling people we have to pay more taxes because we don't have some of these. That is it. So I think we need to look at the expense side as well as the tax side. My, since I gave out a graph of our um, events and what they're costing per person and how many are going to them. I'm willing to cut some of them off, some of them are great, they follow on people and they bring people in the city. Well, normally come and probably spend money somewhere else while they're here, but I think those are things that we need to look at besides taxes.
Do you have what you need? Oh, Councilor Azadi?
Hey guys, can you hear me? I can't hear anyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, so first I want to commend staff for, uh, for the exercise, you know, it's difficult to bring a council that is very philosophical to be more quantitative. And, um, to everyone's point though, we do need a lot more information. Um, for me, the biggest issue when I was playing with the model was the road, the roadway fee is still in the per unit versus the per use. So I did my own calculation there, but I want to start with, start by saying that we all agree it's really e- essential that we must address the fire infrastructure needs to protect the safety route community, I think that's clear. But at the same time, we also need to make sure that any proposal must also protect the financial stability of our residents. So especially in this moment of economic uncertainty and rising inflation and supply constraints. We are, you know, our, our working families are getting crushed, our small businesses are getting crushed and it will only get worse. So with that, that's why I believe we need to modernize our funding mix by adding a commercial roadway fee based on actual use. And increasing the lodging and marijuana taxes, but keeping flat sales tax, keeping flat property tax for our residents, because I think we have an opportunity that we haven't really tapped into yet. And when I did a rough calculation of the roadway fee by use, you know, if you take 960 businesses, you multiply that by just say roughly 50 trips a day, times a dollar a trip, that comes to 17 million in road use revenue that we can make every year. And I know that's rough and it's not flat and it's different by industry and different by category, but if we have more, so we, we need a more sophisticated model for that roadway piece. Cause I think that there's millions of dollars there that we haven't tapped into, that we should look at before we raise property tax or a sales tax.
I'm bringing up AI now, we can use that more. Had a huge discussion on it. I know that's a big thing that's going forward and it saves money.
Um, I would just like to agree with that, that there are a lot of creative ways that cities are using AI. Um, something that I also realized that we forgot to hit on was, um, on the, um, accommodation tax. Um, we'd like to see what the accommodation taxes are for, um, the cities around us. So that way, um, we could potentially raise it, but still keep it competitive.
One thing that Councilor Ireland said about spires, welcome to this friendly to save money. I think that's part of us telling the story. I mean, it would be interesting to see how you kind of are keeping track of that because there are things that our staff does every day. I still see, I used to do, I still have that work, so to think that's our level. And I think that, um, if we're going to tell this story, because we should get better about not only finding places where we can, you know, squeeze the dollar, but also telling the story of what we do. I think since I can think of, um, that you guys had, or staff had bought, uh, I think like a 3D printer and they were using it to keep the glass system at City Park. And if I recall correctly, we went from a situation where that system was no longer, uh, manageable from outside vendors to us managing by creating the parts for it. Um, and I seem to recall that saved us a ton of money. So I know there are those, um, instances that we do that. So I mean, I would love to, you know, anytime we can do that more. But I also think that we, the city need a better way to track those things and show that to our residents. Because when it comes to, uh, areas where then we have to ask for more money, it's showing that we're being good stewards of the things that we're already managing for the residents. And I think, I just think in my time, we could probably do a better job of telling that story.
The information point to, I think we've all doubled down on that. We've already started our information only sessions with the town halls with the mayor and city manager, which has been really great, I think, for getting extra information out. I think we could just concentrate on some more town halls that are perhaps information only, either from all of council. Um, or just add those, maybe use capitalize on those opportunities to really educate on the budget since that is such a big deal this year. Perhaps we use a couple of those sessions with the mayor to just concentrate on getting information out, uh, to capitalize on that. And then as far as my opinion on where we go forward, uh, on finding investment, because I know we're going to delve into where to save money here shortly. Um, I just think that if we come at residents, I know this was already mentioned, but if you come at residents from several different points. There might be more frustration. And so I really think it's intelligent that to gather as much information and get that feedback first. From residents to figure out where they would be most comfortable going in on one avenue that makes them most sense. And again, I think it should be something that is the highest impact. And I noticed that when we arranged those labors for all the other different areas, such as marijuana or accommodations or. The road fee even, which I thought was pretty low hanging fruit, even that one, the impact was so small that it might not be worth it. To have frustration from our community around that, because it hurts all of us, all of our pockets, right? So where can we just concentrate on educating and helping folks understand where the highest impact lies that might really fix the gap for the city as a whole? And help protect us going forward in the future. Um, and I think that we should go all in on that and really spend our time and energy wisely on educating the community. On why it's the highest impact and how again, we compare to other cities and where, why we're having a gap that other cities might not have. Seeing as they're already covered, for example, by higher mills. So that's gonna play with it.
One thing, I was gonna talk about HOAs. HOA fees are going up. Um, so so some of us, we don't have those fees, but I know townhomes condos really have high fees. Anymore because of hail damage to roofs or whatever. Um, that's not a property tax, but it's still a tax. And metro tax districts is another tax. So some of these HOAs, if you raise their property tax, they're already getting. Tax higher than we realize. Um, so just keep that in mind too.
Mayor Protem Hatter, you ended up a moment ago.
Everything's been said.
Well said.
Okay, um. So what, Mayor, I'm looking to focus on what staff can bring back when we meet on June second. Um, at a study session and I, there's a large diversity in a pennies, but I think I'm hearing some commonality around accommodations tax. And roadway improvement fee and communication and. Community feedback, community engagement, maybe some follow up on the the polling we did the last time. Um.
You have to remember, we didn't see that. We have no idea what was on there. Who ever got to talk to the consultant, ask our questions, we saw nothing. Barely.
So I think those are the items that I think staff will focus on if that's, if that's good with council. Accommodations tax, roadway improvement fee, communications, community engagement, and the previous polling.
I mean, it totally leaves out my opinion and the mayor's opinion, but I.
No, that's okay. Um, leaves, it leaves out the big, the one or two, either the sales tax or the property tax. Which folks, you gotta look at. So you're not gonna get it with the other three late. We would be better off letting you decide what it's gonna be and just do it, because they're low hanging fruit. We get poof out of them.
Yes, and when we think about whatever was surveyed, I agree with the mayor, we. Saw it at the end of it, and that was the decision already made about what we should do. What have we done to speak to the community? It's both of that. Like, so you know, again, we can sit up here and say, we think this one or that one has passed, but. I feel like there, and there's another question about when do we do it? Do we do something this year? Do we do something next year? Um, I say we do it when it makes sense and it's gonna be successful and it's gonna fit the needs of the community. But with that said, does staff feel that it would be worth, same group, going back out? Making sure that we have our story straight and we are showing like, well, here's what we're doing in between to try to meet this need since this failed. Why'd you vote no? I I mean, have we asked our community that? Because I mean, I can tell you what I've heard. I've heard they didn't know what it was for. It just sounded like a big pot of money that they weren't really sure what it was gonna go for. So, you know, if we're gonna use history as a barometer and say, well, sales tax failed, why did it fail? Like, that's what I I would wanna know. I don't know how the rest of the council will feel, but that's kind of the point I've been getting at. I mean, you do actually have an opportunity for that. Most people probably still live here, so like, do you, you know, do we go back out and same group and. Come up with a different survey with the information at hand and say, you know, here's the needs now, here's what we've done to try to fill that gap and still have a gap. You know, how do you feel about it? Why'd you, why'd you say no? Or we'll get you to say yes.
With the question, especially with um property tax, um, how did they ask the question? Did they share? Parks and Rec isn't a core piece of what the city is chartered to do. And other cities have it as their own tax district and it's X amount of money a year. For each person, each household to have to pay. Not every um city has a fire department, so. That's another tax on there. So there's a possibility, I mean. There's always possibilities. We could cut Parks and Rec totally. You could go to cut the fire department and go to the metro district. And contract out. You, there's lots of things people can do, but what's that cost? The cost is, folks, this amount is gonna be on your property taxes. This is gonna be on your property taxes, plus your city property taxes. I don't think we tell that story. I don't, I bet you anything, when the the callers called people, they, they did not share anything like that. I I I would put my life on it.
Good. Um, yeah, I think again, we need to go back out and poll to understand. How we get the prop, you know, what is it, property or sales tax? I think it's reasonable to assume that maybe we don't even, we take the time, hear from the community, do the polling, do our homework. And then get it on the ballot honestly for next year. Um, because then we'll have more people voting theoretically in a national. Election than we would this year. Um, and we'd have the time to do the education as well, really well. Um, you know, before we have to put our pencils down and stop advocating or or at least educating on it uh before the election.
No, I think um polling is good, but I think that we need to be very um strategic in what questions we're asking. Um, because there was a big gap between the polling when it came to um the money, the um sales tax increase for the fire department. Um, the polling numbers came out really positive for that. And if I remember correctly, I think it was like seventy percent. It was really high. And then when it went to the ballot, it completely failed. So what was the difference between um the way the questions were asked and what was put on the ballot? Because clearly there was a gap there, because the polling said it was gonna pass no problem and then it failed. So. It, polling is great, but if we're not asking the right questions, then we're not getting the right information, because the polling was completely off on that issue.
I know how I feel about surveys. At the end of that one, that one, you know, what happens? Tell us what people were really thinking, so um. I feel like a lot of these surveys say, I mean, people want certain things, but are they willing to pay extra taxes for them? And we don't say that in our survey.
It doesn't serve. And it asked like, which do you ask?
Yeah, but.
How much? It was.
I'm, I'm not talking about this fire. I'm talking about other projects. Um. Like the mayor says, there are other ways to pay. You know, Ireland Department, there's recreation, other cities do it. We have not said that to the public that there's other ways to do this. I think that needs to be a question too.
Well, I I have to believe it's gonna be more expensive than what they're paying now.
Right. We gotta know.
So our story, we need to get our story. So I think you hear any, well, I think you hear people not saying absolutely no to property, absolutely no to sales tax. We have to have the foundation that tells us which one and how we go for. Because you're only gonna get to go once. And unfortunately, we went once, but I contend that we didn't have. It wasn't organized in order to have a citizens group. We didn't have um people going out to every service organization, talking and answering questions out to the schools, out to where people gather. There was none of that. It was a ghost.
Curious, and I don't know what the line is for this, but I do know that the Fire Union did go out and make that burden. My understanding is spent a substantial amount of the body's money trying to get that passed. And so with that being said, is there impacted, you know, actually, we have two um groups that represent. Uh, different parts of our organization, but. Do they have the buy-in either? I mean, they're, at the end of the day, I imagine if it's something that's gonna impact them, they're gonna wanna support it. But like, you know what I mean? Like, are they in a place where enough residents be where they have buy-in so that they're out there being good advocates for, well. Can't quit the city what they need. Um, so I'm just curious if there's room for a conversation with those um bodies to make sure that, you know. They feel that it meets the needs of the the employee group, they work with them. Uh, because same as citizen groups, you you're gonna have the same thing, you're gonna have the same groups that benefit from this. So you would want it to benefit the citizens enough that they're willing to be a part of the fire, which you knew or whoever is gonna be impacted. To feel passionately enough that they're.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yep.
I would agree that I don't think today there was any consensus on any of these options in terms of a filter, so nothing was filtered out. Uh, so we definitely need some further meetings.
There's about maybe a recap and then we can, because we have some other uh, and you'd like to get your input direction on. Let me try something here uh to recap. The, there are two smaller dials that I think that we have. Uh, an indication that we can, we can go ahead and do more specific work on the roadway fee and on the accommodations tax, comparing it to comparables. And on roadway fee, getting more sophisticated and having a use-based fee, we can bring that back to the council, I think, pretty um, pretty readily. And maybe even in time for the June second session. The deeper, broader work is still around and and uh what Councilor Azadi uh recap. Uh, we have filtered out property and sales tax and looking at that, but we need to do a lot more work and it may not be in time for. This budget cycle um or this election cycle. And so um, so we'll take that as a heavier, deeper lift. Um, and then we can do some more work, like your suggestion, uh, Councilor Fergie, about any opportunity that we can take to. More out around the story um and the options and the different scenarios. And Mary talked about those different scenarios, what it would cost if we broke. Service off and had it replaced by a district. So that seems like deeper uh broader work. Uh, but in the short time, we can keep moving forward together and building a twenty-six budget with uh at least bring a couple of those smaller dials in for you. Uh, to look at. It won't be the panacea to our gaffe, um, but it can be a contributing factor. Because the next part of the work is to look at what Councilor Ireland was talking about, which is what are the areas in our um, in our budget? Uh, that you want us to either um hold the line on, increase, or potentially look at reducing. So um, I think we have enough.
Hey, Jody?
Yes.
And just, I just wanna add to that, um, when we look at all the various. Items that we just spoke about, we, what, what is the deadline, the drop dead date that we need to actually pick an option to fill the gap? Because there will be subsequent activities after that date in terms of communication and education and all those sorts of things. And we need to fill the gap, right? So the, I just don't want us to walk out of here saying that we're not gonna fill the gap because it's too hard. So when do we need to decide on something from a drop dead standpoint? Because the fire department needs that money.
I think anybody's saying it's too hard, we don't have the right information. Yes, sir.
I think one thing that we haven't, like I haven't, don't have an understanding of, say, say it did pass. You know, we have a real potentially life-threatening gap in parts of our city. And I think that's what people need to understand is the reality of why they're being important. So even if they would have passed, how, how soon, you know, does that go online? Because if we're saying we're no closer to saving, we want to put something on the ballot that potentially could be the solution, we're still not far away from, you know, potential lifesaving services. In particular area in our city. So um, if, you know, I, I don't disagree that it'll be nice, like. I I don't know that you could really give us a deadline for that. So, I mean, but I would like, you know, like, once you get the funding, you know, how fast can you actually change it? Because that's gotta be a multi-year process between new equipment, building, buildings, training staff. Sure, globally found in discussion of that fire departments, if you have the land, you have design, you have studies. And the funding and towards it, it's that um, that the fastest bet to have your process, normally a three-year process to open the fire. Um, and as we mentioned before, the apparatus, a little bit of your hand, you have some options, you're extending life. Since you're at that, we're seeing nobody say then, but it's four-year turnaround, it's bringing your fire apparatus. Uh, post stations, I think, that are, that will be operational for three years. So with that being said, kind of to your point, um, I feel like I wouldn't wanna just say, let's not do anything sooner. I'd like to know if you, but I don't wanna do anything too soon just to do it. I don't want it to be successful still, but I would. I would hope that we could try to at least see if there's something that we can develop that we feel comfortable with. And maybe that will begin the community on board. And maybe we can, and then we wait till next year. Really wanting to take that away of, you know, if it's, it's really feasible. And that's where I would love to you guys to, you know, take some time after today and say, well, okay, we've, we've heard you. To do all the different things in order to tell that story and survey, whatever you think that you're gonna recommend. You know, like, I'd like to hear from you whether or not you think that's feasible to still do something this year or not.
Just gonna say, on that point, like, probably get started on the U R A funded one, so that's something, but to your point, like. Yeah, I'm just thinking, can we get a head start on design? Like, if we know where maybe Station Seven might go. Um, if we have the land for that, like, could we get at least started on design work so that it's more like plug and play when we do actually get funding? So that we're not two and a half years out, we're just, you know.
That's a good idea.
Well, even to double down on that, like, okay, say you don't ever get funding, so then what do you do? Because I mean, that's part of the story, right? That's what like people need to understand the impact is. And if we don't do it this year, what work on top of U R A work are you gonna do? Because we've already given direction, you still have other pieces that maybe you don't get funding for, so how do you? You know, what's the organization gonna do in order to build that station, build this, you know, by the bunker gear? Uh, you know, because that's the reality that I would hope that work's not gonna stop if we say we wanna wait another year, you know what I mean? So that'd be a, a good part of the story, I think, for the community to understand that real impact of that failing. Okay, what's next, Chris?
Next, we have scheduled a break and restarting at one ten. Can we do a five-minute break? A little caffeine.
We can continue. This work is too important to rush like we did the strategic plan and just boom and make decisions that maybe we shouldn't make. So let's do it correctly. It's at three o'clock, and we need to leave. We finish in different day.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate that. All right, we're going to do now a second round of, a second round of small groups, a small group discussion, and this is going to be around service delivery priorities. So I'm going to split you up again. Facilitators and quality of public note business again. We're asking for a couple of things. We're looking for your small groups' service delivery priorities for 2026 and areas for enhancement or reduction to support these services. I'm going to have the mayor, councillor Hott, councillor Ireland. Go to this board with Larry. And Mayor Protim, councillor Demott, and councillor Carmelia, go to the front with Barbara. And facilitate those questions. Let's do 20 minutes. Service delivery priorities and areas for enhancement or reduction to support those services.
And Chris, could I add? So this is councillor Ireland, what you were talking about, which is let's spend time together today talking about the rubbish side of our fulcrum, and now the afternoon, we can talk about the expense side of it.
The sound is not working on the live stream. You said, I was like, oh, I'm like.
I'm still recovering, sure. I'm still recovering, Michelle.
How do I just go?
Wanna report out for your group?
I need to be able to read.
Well, go for it.
You can move. You're free to stand wherever you want. Or sit. There's an extra chair.
All right, Mayor Protem's gonna report out for the group that was at the front.
Okay. So we came, we came up with a lot of ways to spend more money. Um, I know that was the point, right? So we did talk about events in general. One, we'd like to see events be more streamlined, you know, obviously thinking about how do we get the best bang for our buck? Money-wise, where, but also social capital-wise. So to balance the two, we did talk about having, uh, again, that donation when you come. If it's a free event. Oh, great. If that goes. Um, big, big finance, obviously. We know we need, uh, increase in fire service. Not that we're needing to increase it above a standard, but just to maintain our standard. And then dispatch, we heard earlier that, uh, we need that to be, again, meeting our standards. We talked a couple, a couple of different ways around security. One was housing security. Um, this may or may not mean that we're spending more money, but thinking about partnerships. And how do we, as the economy becomes more unstable, or, you know, we just don't know what's gonna happen, and we have a lot of spending cuts. How might we be able to leverage partnerships to at least help with theme housing security in the city? Um, we did talk a lot about security for businesses and neighborhoods, that we may need to increase some funding levels, whether that's for grants, um, or for some partnerships. The other thing was evaluating our fees and fines. So fees for services or activities, but also, um, our fines. Where do we sit with other municipalities to be increased? You know, public safety fine or something. I know we've talked about that in the past, but. And then we talked about some efficiencies in equipment, either procurement or sharing with other communities or. And then reductions. We didn't come up with a ton. Uh, that, we talked about the events. Um, again, we were just thinking about, is there, are there any efficiencies we can find with, uh, parks and rec, particularly if we're providing services that are provided cheaper by a fitness center or something, like how do our rates compare? And is that something that we can, wanna continue to subsidize? Um, if the private market is doing a better job of it. Um, and then just water conservation. I'm just looking at Eric. You're gonna have to save money in parks. You're gonna have to. Just kidding. Like sadly, they came around. That's kinda, I think we focused more on sadly, the greens on. Anything else?
Do you wanna expand on that last one that you made? The water, what does that mean? That means all city.
Conservation of water. Um, we're the biggest water user customer. So how do we, oh, stand still? How might we continue to support reduction of our water use?
From the other team, any questions or clarifications? Right. Is there a volunteer from the team that was in the back that would like to report out?
I'll share. The, our top priorities are police, fire, water, and streets. Fire has the little pink asterisk because they're in need of, um, money right now. Enhancements, we said we love the lean that Jody's been doing, and I can't read. Oh, innovation. That if people have an idea of how to either enhance or reduce, um, you should have, um, they, people should feel free in the organization to share their innovation. Sidewalks, we have, um, some areas where we don't have continuation of them going. I don't know exactly where those are, but we need that for safety and people, walkability and whatnot. We talked about AI as an investment, but also probably, um, for things to go easier, but also we need to be, um, careful about the security that goes with AI and making sure, um, it's used correctly. Telling a clear story, um, about innovation and like example was the 29 repositioning of folks that Jody talked about today. We just, over and over in all of our talk, it's just, we don't tell our story out loud and and loud and clear to the, um, citizens. You keep, but you just do your work because it's what you're here to do. You value your job. You value your work. Work together. You just do what needs to get done. But we need the mindset of, you know, I'd even go so far as every one of your managers' reports at the DIAS. You should have a couple of good little snippets to tell about how you're, how you use lean or some things that are happening that, um, or some things that are happening that you didn't hire some new people, you are retooling people. Whatever it is, you've got lots of stories to tell and the public needs to hear it. Reductions. Couple of us said we're very open to your evaluation. We're not here day to day. We don't know, I'll speak for myself. I rely on you to go to Jody and Jody comes to us. And I did use, we have people that come to the podium to tell us, what do you do? You aren't running the city, you let staff run the city. That is a true story. If they want to run the city, they should apply to be the city manager because that's who runs the city. We give direction as we're giving today, but the person that runs this city is the sitting in the city manager's seat. And anybody that wants to run the city, they should apply for that position. Because we do different things. We are the system that gives the direction and you do the implementation. So that is not our job. The city events for best return on investment. A couple of things that were brought up was, oh, just bang for the buck. And there were examples of Christmas tree lighting costs 33 cents per person to put on. And the Easter egg hunt was $15.
Can you say the Christmas, Christmas tree lighting one again?
Thirty-three cents.
Thirty-five cents, actually.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five cents.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't hear that. I heard like for light, I don't know what was going on.
But I just want to like, just reiterate, we need y'all to brag more so we can take that to our constituents.
Councilor Mark?
Similarly, it's hard for me to say what we need to reduce because same as mayor. I would like to you guys to do that. And I think it's more about, back to Jody's lean, it's about building the culture where we celebrate when people come with those kind of wins. But that's the expectation that we're setting with this organization that we want you to find Eric. That doesn't necessarily, in our business, I don't think that means cuts of funds. It means reallocating them to, you know, more important needs that we have in the city and in the organization. So I think the more you do that, the better we'll get at being able to really target our dollars when you celebrate the folks for finding those places to reallocate funds.
Yeah, and there are some private businesses, but also the state. Like my husband works for O I T at the state. They actually have like giveaways or like if you're able to find ways to save like a certain amount of money. If you save a substantial amount of money, you get like a bonus or something like that. So there's a carrot to go looking.
My husband had an I B M to cost reduction thing all the.
Councilor Corrigan?
I just want to add to a point that wasn't entirely popular across the board on my team, but I see it again on the other team's list, which is really taking a look at our events and streamlining that. And what I mean when I say streamlining, really do mean, do we need to have a celebration for every event that we are having? And I realize they are popular. I also think that a lot of organizations in our city could probably be offering or are offering similar events. So could we partner with them and uplift their event with either a nonprofit or a church? And do we, maybe can we mix a couple of big ones and we just concentrate on, you know, the Fourth of July is our big one. The Westy Fest is our big one. We have the movies and the park and a few others. Do we need all the smaller ones that are costing us dollars and aren't getting us that ROI? And can we, you know, reach out to some of our nonprofits and see what they're up to? Or what some of our partners or the chamber might be up to? And then we attend those to help bring a pile, you know, more attendance to those and just uplift those with partnership.
I just want to balance that with, I mean, we're the seventh largest city in the state. And I want us to, in social capital, i.e. connection is one of our strategic priorities. And so I just want to make sure that we don't partner everything away. There's communities that are much smaller than us that have, I think, a better cultural togetherness than what we have right now. I don't think we, it's terrible, but I think we could do better. And so I just want to emphasize, events are important to me. And especially because we have such a diverse population. We may need, I don't know, but I'm just going to leave it there.
Counselor Huzz?
Just to kind of piggyback off what Mayor Prost was saying. Something that I was reading from the Human Rights Campaign, they have a LGBTQ naorial playbook to help make, with ideas on how to make cities more inclusive. But what people don't realize is the more inclusive cities are and the more safe people feel to be here because of that inclusivity, there's actually a positive economic impact. So sometimes we just look at the cost, but we don't look at the impact. So there are things that you wouldn't automatically assume has a positive economic impact. Like you wouldn't think being more inclusive correlates with more money for a city, but it does. So I think that's also important to look at when we look at the types of events that we're putting on.
I look at the events as reaching out to such a broad spectrum. Not everybody goes to everything, nor are they expected to. Different things for different folks. What my kids really scoped out on when they saw, I don't know, had a list laying somewhere. And they could probably rule out Veterans Day and Armed Forces. And I'm just quickly looking, I think that's about the only one that doesn't have liquor involved. They said, so where's the family in all of this? And I just thought that was a perspective from that generation that probably we went from always having events with no liquor to having events and most of them have liquor. And it was just funny that my kids pointed that out. But we have a broad spectrum. I believe that Parks and Rec has, over the years, changed some things. We've got new administration sitting there. So I know they talk about things and will look at things they have, they have their budget. They have to look at what makes sense, what doesn't make sense. The big thing for them, I'm sure, is police presence. That's probably a huge cost. And as it should be for anybody that puts on an event. But knowing, I just think some things need our signature on them. Not, and you're good about going with other folks and doing what we can do with other folks. But there's certain things that I believe our citizens expect things to happen from Parks and Rec. And they do attend, so.
Counselor Azadi, do you have, do you have feedback on the top priorities and enhancements and reductions?
Yeah, so I would say that language access is pretty critical because every resident deserves to understand and engage with the services we provide. So language access, we should continue on that. I think we're doing a better job these last few years and we need to just continue that momentum. I'm a big fan of micro mobility. So I'm not sure if it's this budget or the next one, but we need to have a serious discussion, probably in '27. Whoever is on council at that time on micro mobility and how we can make sure that we serve everyone because not everyone drives. And true infrastructure equity really means investing in the full range. Just as important, I think, we need to tell a better story. I think a couple of people mentioned this already, a better, more transparent story specifically about the cost of service. So I've been saying this for a few years, where, you know, what it really takes to deliver the roads, the response times, the public infrastructure people that people rely on. Those details, especially the quantitative, you know, dollars, where do dollars go and why it matters? We should be telling the dollar story of our service delivery a lot more because I think that will change hearts and minds faster than what we currently do today. And I think we can do a better job of promoting city events, not just the big ones that we do already. But there are a lot of events that go, that take place, that people don't, just don't know about. And we need to balance out how we promote those so that the community knows what's happening and how to get involved. And I think from a reduction standpoint, and I hope we're all on the same page here. I don't think there's any need to reduce staff at all. I love the current approach by Jody to just be smart, to make sure we squeeze as much as we can from what we have. But I am not in support of any reductions in staff. I think staff does a great job. And I think that repurposing open positions makes the most sense when Jody sees the fit, right? When the fit meets the need. So I'm happy with the way things are now.
Any questions or feedback?
Yeah, I just want to mention that micro mobility was brought up at the last inclusivity meeting by one of our seniors. And if we do have, if we do have access to that at all, I think that, I mean, it won't reach every senior, but I think that we need to be letting all of our senior centers know or the senior living centers know. So that way, seniors are aware of what we might offer. Because if I remember right, I believe Counselor Azadi brought this up last year. And we were told there were some avenues for people who need the micro mobility. But I don't know what those are. And I don't think that our seniors know what those are either. And so we need to, we may need to do a better job with micro mobility, but we definitely need to do a better job on outreach. And I think an easy way would be starting with all the senior living centers. So that way, they're at least aware because the person who brought it up is a senior who does live in one of those homes, who doesn't drive anymore and needs help.
Counselor Ireland?
I know that Uber does that, but it's Medicaid and Medicare. And I know that seniors probably, it's an app, they probably have trouble with that. As far as events go, and the $15, the egg cut this year was more than it used to be. I'm not saying we don't have an Easter event, but maybe we find a better way of doing it. And I do find when you're around drinking anymore and they're not family oriented, you're taking one of them. I think we need to have some more family oriented events.
Jody, hearing that, do you have any, do you have any questions or anyone from our department director team?
Oh, this is really helpful.
All right, I think we can take these boards and summarize these and bring these back on June 2nd. If that's amenable to everyone. And then we have a scheduled 10-minute break right now. We'll come back and do a recap and next steps.
Do 10, that sounds good. Do you need a break? Don't need a break. No break.
All right.
Stephanie? It's Ian. If you do, go ahead and.
Be making money because we have 27 million sitting there. And sure, there's smarter folks than me working on this, but I just want to bring that up.
Yeah, I can speak to that as the city's presently treasurer until Monday morning. Our city has an external financial advisor, Chandler Investments. We've selected them through a request for proposal process. They manage tens of billions of dollars for city governments across the United States. Of course, our state and our city charter limit the character of the investments that the city's allowed to choose. Our number one goal is safety. We also need liquidity and then we seek to earn yield. Chandler has done an excellent job in diversifying those investments, both in term and in the character of credit quality underlying that. So most of the city's investments are United States Treasury bonds, government-sponsored entities, much like the state would invest in. And then a very small, maybe 10% portion of corporate bonds that are all triple A, those would be household names that you're familiar with. Current yield on our portfolio is maybe three or four percent. So on 27 million, that's about a million dollars a year, just round figures as we saw earlier on total revenue sources. I think investment income was onward of about $10 million a year. Maybe it was 12 if we look at the earlier slide, I took note of that. And that's money that is programmed, just like all of the revenues that the city charges for services, property tax, sales tax. It's a recurring income that we're very, very used to. So the opportunity to make any, you know, significant meaningful enhancement to that is fairly minimal in terms of would it materially provide for the various initiatives that the council has? I think that's probably fairly challenged. But do know that we. I I think that's probably fairly challenged, but do know that we are and have been for many years committed to excellent best practices in the city government. Um investment management, for sure. Yeah, and then I realize that also uh folks in the public might think, you know, what are we, how are we investing those funds? And we aren't able to purchase stocks or, you know, penny stocks or or uh, you know, bonds that are high yield, things like that. So we have some limitations there.
That I was, that might speak to, you just might have answered it. I was gonna say three to four percent really doesn't match the market, right? S and P is usually more around four to five. And so, you know, are, do we have any ability? I realize that as a city, we have to invest safely, wisely, and that might be some of the limitations you're talking about, but is there any way to push that?
You know, we uh uh actually, I think you really well and probably better than a lot of comparable sized and especially smaller local governments in Colorado. Because we have a pretty good reserve, we can diversify across a number of different assets. But Colorado statute would not allow us to invest in the S and P five hundred or the NASDAQ. Or the Dow Jones Industrial Average, we just aren't allowed to do that legally. And rather than employ regular full time staff and, you know, uh have a real um cumbersome kind of environment like some of our neighbors. Uh we rather outsource that to professionals in the industry who work on that um across a big scale, if it's at billions of dollars. Um and they're in the markets every day, they have all the right subscriptions to Bloomberg Financial uh metrics and all of the different things, so. Pardon me?
We're doing all the right things.
I think we are, and also we present our investment portfolio on westminsterco.gov. So any members of the public, council, staff can always click on our reports to see all of the holdings within the investment portfolio, the credit quality. The diversity of term and uh credit quality and so forth. So all of that's available on the city's website, and uh we've come a long way uh in the last twenty years as a city to really. Uh I think be uh really on the cutting edge and do what you just said, which is push it a little bit. We didn't always own corporate bonds, but we do now, and I think that's appropriate for us, so uh thanks for the opportunity to describe that.
Great, so that was our uh kind of wrap up from this morning. Uh the discussion we just had around the service delivery priorities, the enhancements and reductions. These the the boards that staff will compile um and get those back to uh city council um for any follow up. These are the items we're going to be taking as we roll into developing the lean twenty twenty six budget. So I wanted to make sure we've captured everything from uh the day and anything we need to be thinking about council's perspective as we roll into that.
I would like to take a poll on the marijuana tax to see if we have four or one counselors that would like to get that. Let's go down the line, uh counselor, or Carmelia. And if you're not ready, say so.
I really like, well, I was gonna go back to my first input was I really like some more community input. I know that's another chore, it might be more costly, but I really wanna hear from the community, what are your thoughts?
They voted for it.
I just think that we should have one more uh town hall, and instead of asking them again, not the same that we did, just saying this is our proposal, yay yay, how they respond.
Um I'm I'm not a no, but I would like to know more of the information we asked for earlier before I can say. Cause I'd I'd like to hear from the chief as far as like what the actual cause of services and cities, especially, you know, ones that if you're proposing for. You know, that's probably we, which would be a good example, some of those other ones that, you know, have measured it by their city space. Um the other thing that I was finding a really hard time when we were doing the uh discussion was trying to find what kind of excise tax other cities put on it. To see, you know, what the impact would actually be, because um I would wanna measure the two things, what the um extra services are. And what the cost of those are versus what we would actually give you in revenue. So I just don't have enough information to to say whether or not we should go for it, but I don't want it off the table at this point either.
Counselor Zadi?
Can I ask a question? Is the chief there? Chief, uh I think I heard you earlier say some of the impacts. Are you saying it it would be favorable or unfavorable to the city for from a police standpoint?
The information that I'm aware of, it would be unfavorable from a leasing perspective.
And in general, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it would it would increase calls for service, both when the business is closed because of the increased burglaries, but also the uh it is a cash business. So there are, some of the cities have the, have seen increased robberies um as, because it is a cash only business. As well as um some of the crimes have increased in the area. If people are coming to that business on foot, knowing that it's, they're either leaving, leaving the business with marijuana, or they're coming to the business with cash.
Okay, thanks for that, and Chris, Chris, the model, I don't have it open, but the model had the max gain from marijuana tax as like something low. What what was that number, the max?
So I don't believe, wait, is there a max that's in there?
No, when I put in a percentage, i- it maxed out at eight for each box.
Oh, gotcha.
And so I forget what the dollar amount was that equaled the eight to sixteen percent.
On our sheet it says.
But whatever that was, it was low.
One, one point seven eight million is on our sheet from the exercise earlier.
Okay, um I think for all of these though, so all of these options, I don't feel like we did filter down to just the two things. I think it was all of these, and I think we need to be more information on all of them. I- is that not what the summary had said, Chris? I don't remember what your 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 recap was.
And so I I think that's, I think that's accurate. I'm I'm looking into uh what to follow up in our next session, which is in on June second. Um and which are the longer term? So I think I I had the uh sales and use tax and property tax as more long term. Um and then follow up in our next session on roadway improvement and accommodations. Um and I guess I'm I'm listening right now for uh the marijuana tax discussion. And Chris.
My opinion is I think all of them, including the marijuana tax, of all five options, need to have more information.
And I was gonna add that the, to explain what Chris had said, that the the smaller dials, those are within city councils' ability to dial now. Uh whereas property, uh so accommodations and um roadway, uh those are dials that council could choose to turn in this budget, budget, right? You know, uh the June second session or a little bit later, whereas property and sales tax requires the support of the people through the vote. And so it's accommodations tax, thank you. Um and so there are a couple of dials that are are adjustable um in pretty short order, if if desired, and the other ones take a longer um, take a longer. Deeper, broader look, because they will involve education, outreach, engagement, and then uh ballot question.
To clarify real quick though, the marijuana would not take a vote unless we added the tax, right? We could as a vote of council, so that one should be included, I think. If we wanted to allow marijuana as a business to be taxed at its current rate that we already have, we could do that right now as well.
Correct, so there are two steps in the marijuana discussion. One is marijuana sales could be allowed by city council in Westminster, and that would be hacked at our existing rates. That would, that would require additional action, except to allow that business, which is currently not allowed. Um and then a second marijuana step would be after that or in concurrence with that, to then add an additional tax on marijuana um sales. But the first step, and that would be required going to the ballot, but the first step doesn't require, that's a city council decision. And and city councils made that decision in the past to not allow marijuana sales, but they could also make the decision to allow marijuana sales.
I just, I think it's probably much harder if we allowed it and then asked for a tax afterwards. Like who wants to pay more for something that they pay less for currently? I would like to word it in a way of, if we pass this excise tax, then we will vote on it. Because otherwise, I don't see how the voters would vote for it.
Yeah, I wanted to uh make sure that we knew it was gonna be a net benefit. Regarding, our assumption is assuming we have four. Sales facilities in the city, and right now I think we're at a saturation point, just regionally and reducing from there. So while, yeah, is the, is it worth our time? As I'd wanna make sure, and it's, you know, I wanna make sure it's a net benefit, it's not costing us more police work to monitor than we're actually getting out of it. So I, that's why I feel like there's, I just need more information on that.
Yeah, elsewhere. Yeah, I think I just, I think we all want more information, that's just something that was left off the board on more information, so I, I'm on board with more information. Counselor Ireland?
Um I'm a no, I think we can track better businesses that give us taxes, so.
And and can I just get a quick clarification, uh Jody, about that that long term word that is still bugging me? On the sales tax and property tax? You are not waiting to bring back more information on those two, the big elephants in the room, right? The sales tax and property tax, you're gonna bring us more information on that as well? Sooner than later, versus having that be like a long term, multi year thing, because we need to make a decision on that too.
So I think the discussion is in the context of of uh what we'll be able to bring back for city council on June second, which is less, uh just slightly less than a month from now. So we'll bring back in some things you can act on or consider uh to act on um while we work on um. The heavier left, you you likely wouldn't have enough based on today's discussions um around sales and property tax, for example, to make those decisions on June second.
And if I could follow up also, Counselor Zadi. The work for those that I think we are tracking is follow up on the previous polling, review the likelihood of doing polling moving forward. Working on communicating the story um and community engagements. So again, not something that would be done by June second there.
Yeah, and and those things are, those things are important, but that's not even what I think is most urgent. I think most urgent for those two topics are the numbers. We need more information on the impacts, the numbers, what it could look like, best practice, you know, um what the other cities are doing, et cetera. Because. The communication piece is once we actually know what we're gonna do, then we can educate and do all the all the other things. But what I don't want is to do is delay making a choice of, hey, here's where, you know, if staff says, here's where we recommend these things should be. And if it stays the same, then staff needs to say that, right? We need to make a decision and say, do we wanna keep it the same, or do we wanna increase it? Because that's where the most bang for the buck is. Well, I don't want us for that decision to be delayed because of communication.
Counselor Zadi, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to ask for some explanation. So you said more information, and I think what I heard was around the need and the amount that would come in from those streams, which I feel like we've provided. So can you tell me a bit more about what, what you need?
I guess what I need is a decision point, whether it's a month from now, two months from now, where council will feel comfortable enough to make a choice and say, hey, we're gonna keep everything the same. Or we're going to increase these two things. When are we having that discussion? Because we didn't have it today, we had it today, but staff or council said they needed more information. So which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
I need to hear back from you on, I understand the sense of urgency, Counselor Zadi, but until I hear what, like what you come up with from all this feedback. I'm, I'm not gonna give you any kind of directions, you might not even be ready for direction. So I'd just, I'd like to hear that. I would, to my earlier point, it would be if you can come up with something that makes sense by June second that you're comfortable with, great. If by June second, you're like, we're not there to put something forward that's actually gonna be something feasible for us to be comfortable to put forward to stakeholders, the city council. Organization, and most importantly, community, you know, that takes the time you need to get it done. But as I said earlier, to his uh Counselor Zadi's um position of urgency, like if we can make it this year, great. Like the, you know, the longer we wait, um yeah, costs could go up, but besides, I'm more interested in the fact that we have gaps in service that could cost people. Frankly, their life, so yeah, the urgency is there, but let's not rush it to just end up with another failed thing that pushes us back further.
And for the um things that um you know won't be ready by June second, do you have a rough estimate on when we might be able to have um those discussions?
Maybe what we can do, uh I have an idea, listen to the discussion. And it builds on words you you used just then. We will pull everything we can back together for you on June second. So first on the on the dials that you can move uh right now. And then on sales and property tax, we'll bring back in, Chris, the information around the analysis, uh what it would take to get to a gap closure. If it was a hundred percent funded from a sales tax uh increase, uh if it was a hundred percent funded from property tax, that'll be, that'll be a band between those two. Um and then also the little dials will come into play on those and reduce that impact, uh that gap. That's something we didn't do before, right? We came in and it was gonna be one thing paid for everything, um and it was only the, it was only fire. This is uh fire streets, our total need package, so I think we have enough that we can come back in and represent that data. Building on today's discussion, and I'd also add, and I I think I heard a sub theme as well about not losing uh ground or not losing time on these decisions. And so what we can also bring back is some phasing options, and I think Council Mayor Protem, I talked about this earlier this afternoon, which is we can look at. Okay, so you have a choice, uh you, we could go all the way uh on sales or proper and or property tax this year to close the gap. Or we could uh angle toward a a date next year on a question, and we can look at closing the gap by providing full design. Building Station Eight, full design on Station Seven, maybe designing, possibly building the training center uh for fire, those kinds of things. So we could present you with some softer edges to these discussions, and that might help uh us narrow down on decision points that we make now, or a council makes now. And those that we um deeper, deeper work on. So for Counselor Zadi up there, um you know, we wouldn't rule, we're not gonna rule anything out before June, uh at June second. Those will all be back in front of you with more information based on today's questions and discussion. And so hopefully a little bit of, uh uh as a mayor's analogy, a a slight narrowing of that filter. As we, as we got some great direction today on a couple of elements, um and some more information needed on a couple others.
One other point that I'd like to bring up that I would hope council would agree with is the one thing we can start doing now is telling the story. And I feel like we uh need to do that. So however, the communications team can start telling the story in terms of the things we talked about today, not just the needs. It's, you know, I think that one of the most impactful things that you brought up in the budget town hall was the impact to life. Like that's, and that frankly, I think that's the first time I at least did register with me, so it was brought up, or I don't remember that way. And um it's kind of stuck with me, although, you know, since we had that meeting, people need to understand what these dollars mean in terms of it. But they also need to understand the work that you and this administration is doing in terms of uh covering the gap without the. Because, you know, that work continues, and I think that that's gonna help our long term case with the community for that to understand. Not just the impacts to the services that potentially they might need, but the work that you guys are doing in order to try to fill that. Because then when we come to figure out what the gap is, you know, that's where we have to go back and say we need your help. So I I think that you can start getting ahead of that now, and we don't, in my mind, I would hope everybody agrees, you don't need one second to start telling the story.
Back to marijuana.
Term I never heard your use.
The only thing for me is all of the questions that were asked, and chief, I mean, it is so little.
The only thing for me is all of the questions that were asked and chief, I mean, it is so little money. And I agree, you Mayor Protem, the, so four, four is a lot. I was maybe saying three. I know some places I don't even want it to, I think we have to be, if we do that, we're strategic where we place them. Number two, we have to be sure it doesn't impact other businesses, but mostly it's impacting you and your service and where you, we know the hotspots. I've been on enough business walks, I know the hotspots that you don't need that to. And so to me, right now, the two, having it doesn't out, is a downer versus what all could happen. So, so there's, there's only one no, the rest are all under question marks or, or slightly to a no. So that's where we're at with that one, to finish that one out. Anything else for the good of the day on these issues for these, our team members?
And thank you all for your time.
And thank you, Jody. Jody, thank you for that plan. I think that's a great plan.
Thank you all for your time today. Thank you to our department directors and our staff that's here. The folks listening will be returning with you on, on June second for some follow up.
And for anybody listening, we, council meeting is down here Monday night.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and thank you, Mayor, for saying that. And the reason for that, we're going to do a workshop with you on onboarding for the next city council. Let's really want to pick your brains as to what you, what you liked about either the recent or earlier onboarding and what we could see differently to make it more productive, especially our new councillors. This term, we get a pretty great feedback on what worked well and, and things that we didn't see on our own. So that's why we're back in here, we'll do some flip chart work and that'll be a big chunk of the evening.
Sounds great. Thank staff enough and especially all of our experts that had to come out today. All the IT people behind the scenes we probably don't even see. Just thanks and thanks to all of you, community members that sat through a day. I hope your horse wins. And the apps and the.
Definitely speak for it.
I'll go back in.